And add this in the pledge.
Back in the corner.
Oh, way back there.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and no God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any comments from the public for items not on the agenda? All right. Here I am. Any board acknowledgements?
I've always got something to say.
I know you do. I'm looking to you.
Come on now. Give me a second.
I know. You just get in yourself sadly. I can jump in with a quick comment about our VSBA/ VSA, so Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association Conference Thursday and Friday, and was a really good opportunity to hear from the secretary on topics around Act 46 and successfully looking at equity and opportunity and accountability and efficiency, cost, as sort of the drivers for those type of studies. There are many of them going on around the state. I want to say 20-something. And the two days also took a close look at upcoming healthcare expenses in that second day. We got to hear all sorts of great news on Friday. So that, and we had a pretty robust conversation around the allowable spending limits. And Dave Sharp, who is the chair of the House Ed Committee, was sitting at our table. So we got to hear our concerns around the notion of imposing four different allowable spending limits on our four different budgets at a time when we're being asked to look strategically at long-term planning for potentially a combined district. And I think he heard loud and clear how what might need to be done to meet, especially with healthcare expenses, these spending limits in each of those individual budgets could have draconian impact on, hopefully not, but could, on programming for students as we are trying to look together how we are strategic with our investments for kids. So I don't know that there's anything they'll do to reverse that, or perhaps put it on hold with something that sounded as though there was a greater potential. But I don't think at this point, since they won't convene until the beginning of January, that somebody asked if they might convene early for that purpose. I think they're recognizing, because he wasn't the only person there, there were several people from the House and Senate Ed Committees there to hear the comments and concerns from the field. And I don't think anybody fully anticipated the unintended consequences of those gaps. I think many of us anticipated it. I don't think the legislators had the full sense of what that could mean at a time where they're trying to incent folks to look at how they can work better together and more effectively and efficiently for kids and taxpayers. So we did our best to convey that message. You know, Rachel was able to be there on Thursday.
Yeah, and Thursday was focused a little bit more on personalized learning plans in Act 77. So, you know, it was a different, really looking at the legislature and what they've done over the last few years, but just one feeling very proud for students across the states because we had an opportunity to see students from various school districts throughout the state and where they are in terms of personalized learning plans or just different opportunities and how that's integrated within their school day, mostly in the high school level, but some pieces in also on the middle school level. And that was fascinating to not only feel proud from our recent, at least those of us with students in the district, who have had recently met with teachers in talking about personalized learning plans and seeing where our kids are and then also seeing on the statewide level where everyone is and feeling very proud of the work that's been done in our school district toward personalized learning plans. So, you know, I just came away feeling very proud of what students in general are doing, but also what our students are doing.
One of the things pretty striking about that without taking too much of our time is that there was a student who shared her experience with personalized learning plans and the portfolio model that they were using in middle school. And when she got to the high school, and this was in another district in the Montpelier area, I think they have a Montpelier High School, they were not using, they had no PLP model at that time. So she actually was bringing her experience and building with the support of some people in the high school to bring PLPs to the high school and pilot with the group. And I'm thinking, my goodness, are our systems that much in the way of this work such that students are having to forward this work? Kind of caused me certain pause around, you know, how we can work on a cohesive system so it doesn't feel like kids are feeling like they're leaving something behind to pick something entirely different up. And I think that maybe the experience our kids are even having from middle school to high school here. So, very interesting. Any other acknowledgements?
Thank you guys for going. But with election coming up, vote coming up soon, I just wanted to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone into it from, well, a couple people on this committee who've been involved. And just the committee, the whole committee of 20 that has put so much into that effort. Regardless of what happens next week, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone into that, people from all around the community.
There's a lot of study and a lot of effort to try and have people who is fully informed as possible, as much accurate information as possible, and thank you, Cashel, for joining us on the communication committee. It's especially helpful, I think, to have somebody who hasn't been sitting there for every meeting to make sure that what we're sharing is not with the presumed knowledge of having been there for every meeting. So that's been a really great incentive to be able to bring to the work. And we'll get to, I think, an update on that towards the end of the meeting. I don't know actually if we stuck it in as an agenda item, but I'll give you a sort of one-page piece coming out to highlight and put information out on sort of the facts of the situation or the findings of the study committee.
Highlights, yes.
Highlights, a highlight sheet. And we've been at like Essex eats out and we're trying to be there at night. But I think at this point, to the extent we can get people out to vote, it's really important because that's where we're going to find the will of the people to figure out where we go from here. And we're working on an exit survey from the vote so that we'll have a sense of where people are coming from, with whichever direction we voted, and we'll know what to do from there. So, thank you. Thanks, April. All right, moving right along. On the consent agenda, we just have the minutes. Do I have a motion on consent agenda?
This time I make the motion, we accept the consent agenda to include the minutes of October 12, 2015.
In the second.
I'll see.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero. Thank you. And I am going to promptly hand it over to Mark because this is, I think, one of my favorite meetings where we see sort of the results of the work that's happened all year. And we get to do it in this time around as well in the context of an update to our strategic plan that Mark's going to share with us. So it's not just how are you doing, it's also a little bit of the how are we going to get there and where we've come. So thanks so much, Mark. Thank you to everybody who's joining us. Again, it's, I think, all of our favorite meetings. So take it away.
Great. Everybody, thanks for coming. Leadership team, and for those of you who've already met Dylan McNamara, who'll be replacing Jess Little in early January, thanks Dylan for coming along. And to my three teacher colleagues, Karen, Karen, and Anna, for spending some time with us this morning, or this afternoon, this evening. For sure about the good work that you're doing in your classrooms at the grade level and supporting your work as educators, but also the work of the district. And we're going to find time early in the presentation to have you share what you're doing, and then you can quietly, well, not so quietly, just depart.
Or hang around.
The people behind you have to stay here throughout the evening.
We know your day started early and ends late.
And we've all had very busy work over the last couple of weeks, so we haven't choreographed this, so I think we'll do okay. We'll see how it goes. But we wanted to start the presentation, that's been a collaborative, you know, work in progress over the last few weeks. You have a copy of the annual monitor report that I sent. I have hard copies for you again this evening. And we also have a copy of the presentation and a copy of the blueprint for learning and teaching for your archives, if you're interested. But wanted to start the evening with a sort of some context setting and then quickly sort of highlight some of the main components of our thinking around the blueprint for learning and teaching. Then I'd like to invite Karen and Anna and Karen to talk a little about the work they're doing, especially in the area of mathematics. I have the content, right? Right? Oh, good. Does this work? I thought it was science.
Do you have a copy of this presentation?
I do. I do, Dan.
The scribble on as we go.
The presentation is there, it's just a bit.
Yeah, they've been playing around it a little bit. I hope not too radically.
Cats away. They're making fun.
Oh, this is what came through.
Yeah, yeah. That's what we got about.
So we have 90 minutes. And again, you guys won't have to wait 90 minutes to be on board, but, you know, I'm really appreciative of the board setting aside, I think, an appropriate amount of time so we can share with you a bunch of things that are happening that we're proud of that's resulting in kids being successful here in Essex Town. But then towards the end of the presentation, and actually throughout, you'll see pieces of data that are similar to that, to those data in the monitor report that support my claim that we're on target and doing what we need to do to meet the vision of our district. So tonight, I want to share a little bit about the blueprint for learning and teaching. I've given you a copy of that. Again, I have another copy I'll pass around in a minute. I wasn't going to take the time to go over it specifically because it really isn't about the means, it's more about the ends tonight, but I think it's appropriate context setting when to share with you some of the targets that we're focused on over the next three years. We want to highlight some of that tonight. We invited three educators to come tonight to talk about the new standards and the new research and how that's affecting their thinking around their practice as it relates to what we're teaching, how we're measuring progress, and the shifts in instructional practice that's happening. So really happy that they're here tonight. We have from Kevin and Peter and Wendy examples of how we're addressing ends policy 1.1 with the themes that you've identified in your ends policies around entrepreneurial and civic and health literacy, for example, community connections, global awareness, sustainability. And they all have some examples, unless you've changed them since this weekend, to share with us. That's sort of an inside joke, by the way. Jessica's going to be here. We have talked a lot about attributes of learning, those transferable skills that we want kids to be able to master before they leave Essex Town and move into the high school, sort of the skills and attributes found in 1.2 and 1.3. We've done a lot of work, and Jessica's led this effort around the multi-tiered system of support. So we want to spend time and tonight in the presentation, not so much, we'll show you some data, but more importantly is the evolution of our thinking in terms of what's transcended practice that started three years ago, and what does it look like today? So that's pretty exciting work, and we're going to have Jessica lead that. Also, again, we'll show some data on our ends. And then we wanted to wrap up, we had a brief presentation two weeks ago on the kneecap science results. So you have copies of that, but I think more importantly, again, is to show you the work that's been happening in the district as it relates to aligning our curriculum with the next generation's science standards. We do have some data for you, Dan, that you had asked about, our kids in poverty and kids on IP's, and if we have time, we can jump into that a little bit. But again, a little bit more of a means discussion, but I think it's important to highlight the good work that's been happening among teachers and school leaders. Ooh, that's a nice start. So this is really kind of a, sort of a wonkish research piece, but when you look at, you know, the work across the country, what I wanted to do tonight is highlight the main components of systems change. And I'm not going to get into what it looks like at the planning and the building and transformational stages, but in any given target that we're working on in our blueprint, we're in the planning stage, we're in the building stage, and I think in some areas we're starting to transform what's going on in the classroom level. But I wanted to highlight for the board the work at the national level and that you'll find when you look at the blueprint, elements of that in our plan. Because it's important that the work that we do strategically is what we know works in schools. And so this is representative of that, of what's happening across the country and here in Essex Town. The first component is about student learning. And so you'll see in the blueprint, in a number of the systems that we have in place and we're working on, a real focus, an intent on increasing student growth. That really is why we exist. And our student learning, you know, really is focused on five big areas. It's rigorous, and I think that you've all experienced that in looking at, you know, the new state standards that we're being held accountable to, but also what we believe as educators, all kids can meet. And it's got to be high level in all cases. There's a real push towards personalization. You know, Act 77 has really, you know, amplified the importance of multiple pathways in personalized learning. The advent of PLPs, which we're starting to see at the middle level here and to some degree at Founders, is really starting to take root in Vermont and clearly here in Essex Town. And that personalized learning, again, is evident in our plan. It's very, it's highly collaborative among kids. It isn't about necessarily kids sitting in rows, but if you go into any one of our classrooms, you'll see the, how the environments are set up. And it is, it is about making sure that we come to viable solutions as a team of kids, as a team of learners. It's way less individual, it's more collaborative today. It's very inquiry-based, it's not about learning the content, it is, but it's more about how we use that information to solve problems in the future. So you'll see, again, in the plan, a real focus on the inquiry-based way to learning. And finally, it's got to be adaptable, based on changing, or changing society or changing student demographics in our classroom every year, the way kids learn, the way we teach has to be ever-changing. Assessment accountability is throughout this document, and it's not necessarily accountability in terms of making sure we're doing our job, but holding ourselves accountable to do the work that's important to do in the schoolhouse. It's, again, adaptable, personalized, multiple measures. You know, we've really moved away from one data set determining whether or not we're making progress to multiple data sets, and that's a really important concept. With our local assessment plan, I think Secretary Holcomb understands that, in her presentations to statewide educators and other stakeholder groups, she really understands the need to have balanced assessment. And we believe that's a really important vision to have here in Essex as well. Assessment that is, really allows us to look at data to improve our practice. It's not about, it's not for, it's not of learning, but for learning. So the assessment that we use is about promoting student growth. And if assessment's not yielding the data, that's helpful to educators, then we need to take a close look at why we're asking teachers to be assessing kids if it's not helping teachers better understand what they can do to impact learning. It also has to be contextual. That assessment is, the most powerful assessment is the assessment that kids, when they self-appraise how they're doing based on the standard, but it has to be based on real-time work that they're doing. So the closer assessment is to student learning, the better it's going to be. And again, you'll see that in our plan. We also have a component on teacher and professional growth, including leadership development. It's not a separate system, it has to live within our plan, and actually, all of these components are interdependent, inextricably tied to the notion of it's all about kid learning. So teacher and professional growth, you've got a good sense of that model and how that's changed in the last few years, but it has to be equitable across all educators and support staff and school leaders based on what their, where their needs are at any given point in time. Highly collaborative, you've learned a lot about the PLC process and what we do together as educators at the classroom, team, grade level, and district level. The two half-days in January, May are really going to be focused on vertical work. It's one of the things that we have, we're challenged by because of just the way we're set up, but the collaborative nature of our work is tantamount to success of kids. Student-centered, we took a little bit of a detour a couple of years ago in using our time to develop the curriculum to align with state standards, and we're beyond that until the next generation of standards comes out of the agency. We're now being able to use our time in a much more meaningful way by talking about what are we going to do to impact learning, how does our instructional design affect student growth. Has to be flexible in all cases. Again, kids change, our needs change as educators and leaders. We have to, one size does not, does not all fit all, so our growth model has to be situational and flexible based on who we're teaching and the educators and leaders we have on board. And we really believe that professional development needs to be embedded. College courses are important. Going on top of the mountain for a day of a workshop works, but we really feel the embedded nature of the work we're doing through teacher, teacher support, using coaches strategically, bringing in consultants when we feel it's necessary, but the more we can do boots to the ground in the district, we feel has more efficacy. The fourth is leadership and culture. We really believe in a distributed model of leadership and that depending on any given issue that we're, that we're working on, it's important to recognize that there's leadership ability in everybody and how to create a model so that everyone's contributing at that level. We need to be service-oriented. Our job is to serve as, as school leaders. It's not about the superintendent, it's not about Peter Farrell, it's really about us as a team and how do we service our learning community, our children, and our families. And that's a really important concept. We always have to be looking outward, visionary. I can tell you that this, the notion of a merger, it's exciting, but also, you know, it creates just a little bit of a knot in my stomach in terms of what does that look like three, five, 10 years out, because our job is to be looking outward. And honestly, that crystal ball is not as clear now as it was, you know, a couple of years ago. We'll get there, but it's, it's reason to pause and think a little bit more deeply. We have to have an open culture. Culture trumps best practice, and we need to have a culture that reflects this vision in that it's not, it's not one person's view of the world, it has to be all of us on one page, and that takes a lot of work, especially, again, in light of a merger and what that might look like. And finally is to advocate. I'm so proud to be an employee of this district because we have a lot of strong teachers, support staff, and school leaders, a very strong board, very strong parents in terms of what they believe is important in education, and your role in advocacy is, is very, very important, to be able to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. And finally, you'll see in the, in the plan, structures are very important. They need to be synchronized and they need to be interdependent because the structures and the system is what makes things work. So PLC, teacher growth, parent communication, all of these things are important, but they all have to be linked together. They have to make sense as a whole. Security is number one in my mind for kids and for families and for staff. That's an example of a structure. But also structures that are safe and supportive so we can have open dialogues around what's important for kids and we're not going to feel like our voices are not important. We have to build capacity within our structures so that people are contributing, but also have a role in the organization. So PLCs is one of those structures that really invites collaboration at a high level. We have to have the hardware, not just technology hardware, but curriculum materials, resources, so that teachers can do their work. And we've been, when we hear from Ellen later this evening, you'll see that next generation's science standards, and maybe we'll even hear from Anna and Karen and Karen tonight, what we use to teach with kids needs to change. And I never want to be behind, behind the eight ball on that. And we've got some catching up to do, so a budget is important. It's really nothing more than a policy document made up of a bunch of numbers, but I see it as a policy document, making sure it's invested in the ends of the district, and the hardware piece is really important. And finally, we have support built in, and you'll see this in the document as well, is systems that are supporting the work, but supporting the people that are doing the hard work. So again, we're in planning stage in some of these areas, we're in actually building some of the systems, and in some areas, we're starting to see some transformation. I'll think, I'll think you'll hear some of that tonight from, from teachers and from school leaders on some of the practices that are happening in the classrooms because we're beyond just the building stage, we're now putting it into practice. Any questions before I move on? I still, it looks like I still have their attention. So I was going to end with this slide around before I invite folks to come up, and again, I have copies for you or ask questions at the end of the presentation, there's room for that. But really, it really starts with our vision of what does it look like in Essex Town. And this vision statement and the theory of action came about from a group of educators and school leaders who met several times last year with an outside national consultant, with other people in this region of Vermont, and really checking our assumptions about what is the vision of learning and teaching in Essex Town? What's worth fighting for here? And really, it used to say that, it used to say that kids will learn, but we also need to believe that kids can learn, that all kids can learn. And that was a really important thing for the team to put out there. They will learn, but we need to recognize that all kids can learn. We can't give up on kids. And that was an important statement that we wanted to frame our work around. And our, our theory of action is that, you know, a viable and enacted curriculum is really important. And not a curriculum that just lives on a, on a shelf, but something that's very viable based on the developmental needs of kids, based on what we're being held accountable at the state level, based on what we believe works in classrooms today. But it's also enacted, that we have to help hold ourselves accountable to say that if these are the content and performance standards that we believe in, then by golly, all of us need to commit ourselves to that, that body of work pre-K8. And that the, the learning experience, our student-centered, they are inquiry-based, and they're reflective of, you know, your ends policies as a board. And engagement is a big topic. We'll talk about that with Jess and the team tonight and how MTSS really supports the inclusion of all kids in, on their journey. So this was our theory of action. I think I took a slide out that talks about, I'll pass this out now. I think I took it out.
They're messing with each other's slides.
Yes. Oh, wow. Did you see that?
I thought it worked really well.
That was crazy.
Oh, no.
Ellen's right. I thought I took it out. Did you put it back in?
That's in the middle.
Yeah.
You have her question.
So this was the last slide before I invite our three teachers to come up, but there are three big domains. And a lot of what I talked about, what's good for kids, is found in the instructional practice domain in terms of what we're striving for, what we're shooting on, what we're focusing on. There's also a column that talks about the importance of communication and really what's our message. So when we're communicating with the different stakeholder groups, whether it be kids, whether it be fellow educators, whether it be parents, whether it be editorial board from the Essex Reporter, why are we doing the work we're doing? What does it, what does it mean? It's just so what of the work? And so there's a column that talks about a really clear message so we don't deviate from, you know, or chav, a different assumption about what the work is that we're doing. And then, and here's a column that talks about what I just finished up, which is what are the systems that need to be synchronized that work in harmony to meet those end goals of the district? So we, it's general for a reason. Our last strategic plan, we were very proud of it, oh my gosh, it was so dense. There was so much specificity, there was so much, you know, detail that it was a little bit overwhelming to get your head around it for all groups, most importantly educators, to be able to access. So there's, there's room for interpretation here. We have three years to sort of figure it out. We're well on our way to addressing a number of these things, these targets in the area of instruction especially and systems, but I believe that we're, we have, we have a good start to the work. That's all I was going to share tonight about the plan. If you've got a chance to study it, again, we can answer some questions towards the end of the presentation. Okay?
Yeah. Are we good?
Okay. I've been looking forward to this part of the presentation for a couple of weeks.
There'll be a quiz later.
Yeah, okay. But I had asked Peter and Wendy and Kevin, some folks who might be able to best represent the work of the district in the area of mathematics, and their names quickly rose to the top to be able to share, you know, the new work that's happening and how that's changed their thinking about what's going on in their classrooms and in their grade level in their schools. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Just, I've got to open.
Maybe we can introduce our, I'm sorry, I haven't done the proper introduction. Have we introduced ourselves?
No.
Okay, good.
I can start. I'm Anna, me and, and I teach second grade at the elementary school.
I'm Karen Nie, and I teach seventh and eighth grade and ninth grade math in middle school.
I'm Karen Jeffrey. I teach a four or five multi-year at Founders.
And you see our name played so. Are you impressed?
Do you guys mind if I begin to take your old question?
I'll give you a little backstory on how we interpreted what Mark wanted us to do. We took, we wanted to take a strand of math that extends across the grade levels so you could see what it looks like at Anna's end of the spectrum all the way up to Karen's. And Karen suggested we choose algebra, which I think is a great one because it is one of the few that sort of spans K8. So you'll see a little bit about what each of us does with algebra at our grade levels. And then Karen's going to talk a little about, a little bit about the mathematical practices which were new, they were a part of the common core for all of us.
That's exactly what I was looking for.
But I guess you made it click.
Mark, well, this is the end of the web page.
I think it is. Is it on the website? Blueprint?
I think so.
Yeah. We'll make sure, we'll make sure it is.
I was just realizing it wasn't up, so people may not, I don't know where we were going with that chart.
Do you want to sit here?
Okay. No, I can stand right here. I'm good. When first Peter Aspie and
Do you want to sit here?
Okay. No, I can stand right here.
Okay.
I'm good. I would, when first Peter asked me, and then I talked with Karen and Karen, presenting some strand of mathematics throughout their grade levels, and Karen said algebra, and I'm thinking, okay, algebra in first and second grade, you know, it's, it seems like a lot, you know? What are we doing with algebra? Well, of course, it starts way back in preschool. Kids are talking about patterning, patterns. They talk about night, day. They start learning those patterns. And by they get to kindergarten, they're doing patterns with pattern blocks and, you know, different blocks, slap, clap, that type of thing. And as they get to first grade, they're starting to put in more numbers with their patterns. And by second grade, is, second grade patterning is, comes a little different. We're using numbers. We're using, what do you know about the basic math facts? Nine, if you know ten plus one, you're going to know nine plus one. So that's, you know, that was the first thing that came to my mind when we talked about algebra is that patterning because it happens right from the early ages on. But I decided to talk a little bit more about, when you get to first and second grade, they have a good understanding of patterns and you're starting to incorporate that with numbers. But the understanding, the equal sign. And that's a big, really is a big idea in first grade it comes in. And this is taken from the Common Core first grade standard is understanding the meaning of an equal sign. And believe it or not, kids, it's tricky for kids. That equal sign. If you throw off the equation and put, you know, it's five plus two is equals seven, if you throw it around and say seven equals five plus two, kids are like, what? How are you doing? You know, that's not right. So really getting the understanding of what the equal sign in. And what I try to say to the kids is, is the same as. So when we're talking about an equation instead of, you know, six is the same as six. Seven is the same as eight minus one. So they get that language of equal sign is meaning it's the same as. So we use things like balance, and I brought the balance scare, scale here, you know, just to play with the numbers that way. Because you can see like six plus four is the same as, and it would be equal. So what a balance as seven plus three. So that's a big concept first, coming into second. And kids in second grade are still playing with it, trying to understand what, you know, that meaning of that equal sign. We might do something like this where we're balancing and there's one missing number. And then that's, again, talking about that unknown. So we can move to the next slide. And then, so that, that is one of the big things is that equal sign. Another thing in second grade is using addition subtraction to solve one and two-step problems. And where the algebra really comes in is that when the problems have a change unknown. So the kids are giving pencils come twelve to a package, and Ben gives some pencils to his friend. And then, you know, he has seven left. How many pencils did he give away? For kids to be able to process that, what, what is the problem asking for? And there's that change unknown. So putting a symbol or a, a box, I say, put draw a square with a, you know, an empty space inside so that you can get that unknown there. So again, that's building that algebraic, you know? And even though you really, we don't think of it that way, it is pushing them towards that when they get to the upper grades. Also, the start unknown. You know, Mary has a bag with rocks. She puts thirty-four more, thirty-four more rocks in the bag, and now her bag has seventy-one rocks. It's starting with the unknown. And knowing that you could switch the numbers around. So you can take the seventy-one and you can take the thirty-one away. So knowing those patterns within numbers are going to help kids solve other, other problems. We also do a lot with the part, part, whole. And these are cards that we have in the classroom, but kids thinking that, like, that if seven is the whole, what are the two parts that go with it? So that is that unknown again. So we use this as a, you know, tool in the classroom. But just thinking about when they get the problem, so what is the whole that they're, you're being asked, and then the two parts? So those were kind, those were like the big ideas that stuck out to me as some of the things that we do in the algebra, the patterning, the equal sign, the change unknown, start unknown with the, the word problems. And really, starting back in first grade, where they're putting that equal signs is really where they're starting to explore that. And as the second grade, then these numbers get larger because we're now working to within a hundred as far as the word problems. But they're looking at numbers up to a thousand come second grade. So, yeah, it's a, it's a lot when you think about a second grader, but they're, they're starting that algebra, you know, thinking really early on. So it's really going to help as they move along. So that's my second grade's view of algebra in second grade. So I hope that gives you an idea. And I can leave these here if they, if anyone wants to take a look at them. And I think Karen's up.
Do you want me to run? Do you want me to click?
No. No, it's fine. I took it. I unplugged it, Mark. I thought it was interesting when the three of us got together to plan this, how, because how often do we have the opportunity to sit down with teachers of different grade levels, much less teachers that are two or three grade levels away? But it was interesting as Anna was talking about this when we met, and then again, just now, how similar some of the things are that she's doing in second grade that I'm doing in fourth and fifth. Just today, I was working with some fourth graders on subtracting, working with, on strategies like adding up or keeping a constant difference with numbers like, the school collected five-hundred-and-fifty items for the food shelf. A hundred and ninety-nine of them came from fourth grade. How many did the rest of the school collect? And they were writing equations that were five-hundred-and-fifty minus one ninety-nine equals N. So you were talking about how the numbers get bigger in third grade while they get even bigger in fourth. I'm going to stay here because I want to show you some of those smart notebook activities. So I'm going to jump around a little bit because I teach two grade levels. I want you to see what standards look like in fourth grade and then again, what they look like in fifth grade. So that's that standard I was just talking about. They also have to be able to multiply and divide and write equations where there's an unknown. We use shapes to represent that unknown. We can use letters. So there's a simple word problem that they are responsible for in fourth grade, you know, using a P to represent that unknown. This is what that same standard, whoops, let me go back one, looks like in fifth grade. It's expressions, and you can see that it gets a little bit more complicated where it's combining the operations. So rather than there just being one, now there's multiple operations, and it may not be an equation. It's an expression. So there's not an equal sign. So you can just see the complexity and how it just went up from second grade to fourth to fifth, but all around that same concept of using variables, whether they be shapes or letters to represent an unknown. Some other standards in fourth and fifth grade, and again, I'll jump back and forth. So there's a multi-step problem like the subtraction one that I was talking about, but they have to be able to do all four operations. So this was a division one. They also have to be able to represent the remainder. And understand what the remainder means. I think there's five or six different ways that you can show the remainder. Sometimes you have to round it up. If you don't have enough, we're not going to say we need four buses with eight leftovers. We're going to need to get five buses sometimes, depending on the context of the problem. Kids might, the answer might be four. It's okay to round it down. But there's five or six different contexts for the remainder in a division problem. So I'm going to jump ahead to tables, which I'm not sure when it shows up for the first time. It might be in third grade. In fourth grade, they have to be able to represent patterns in a table given one rule. So if I said each day, we put four beans in the jar, at the end of five days, how many beans are there going to be total? Or how many would there be in the jar each day? So it's based on one rule. And the rule in this case is that, oh, there's three beans that are added. So it starts with four, and then each day three are added. In fifth grade, it jumps to given two rules. So now there's two things that the pattern is dependent upon. So in this case, it's a comparison between the fish that each of them catch over a certain number of days. And that patterning leads right into graphing. And I want to show you what that would look like. So it's that table that I just showed you, and this is what it would look like to have kids graph that pattern so they can see it's that constant rate of change, which then leads into what they do in middle school with finding the slope of a line. Which used to be sixth grade. I don't know if it still is because the Common Core, the algebra shifted a little bit. It's seventh now? So anyway, this is the kind of work that they would be doing in fifth grade. Once they found what the pattern was, given two rules, then they would need to graph it to show that change. Looking at the tables, we often do warm-ups. And so taking that table, the fourth grade one, give him, give them the context of the problem. And then the kids can come up to the smart board and tell what they, how many beans they think there would be on day two, and then click on it to see if their answer was correct. Some other examples, the fifth grade one is there too. So different parts of that pattern are missing, so they can come up and tell what they think it would be. Maybe there's two of them there. Here are some other ways, sort of goes back to what Anna was sharing about having an unknown. So using lots of different sort of symbols or representations for that unknown variable, thinking back to when she said equals is the same as. So when you look at, you know, what minus six is the same as one times one, the third one down on the left, getting them to figure out if what I have on the right is one, then whatever's on the left has to also equal one. What minus six equals one? And then they click on it to see. So just sort of a fun way to, and again, we usually use these for warm-ups. This is another one that we've done. The same idea. It goes back to that is the same as. So four times five is the same as what plus ten? So if they have twenty on the left, they have to have twenty on the right.
It's so cool to see that you're doing the same things.
Yeah.
Using different numbers or different.
And the last thing that I wanted to share with you, it's actually Karen said that they use it in, do you, did you say seventh grade? So Ellen kindly purchased this for us. I don't know how many years ago it was. It's a program called Hands-on Equations, and it actually doesn't align to fifth grade when the algebra in the Common Core, some of it shifted up. But anyway, it's this great hand, I can't say enough about it. But we have three kids right now on our team who are using it. So I felt like I should share it with you just to see, so you could see. The kids have their own sets of these that they set up, but we also do it on the smart board. And it's the whole idea that, you know, what you do to one side of the equation, you have to do to the other. And again, this doesn't show up now until sixth grade, but it used to be in fifth grade. So I felt like it was important to show you. So I'm sure when you all learned algebra, you know, someone told you that you had, if you're going to take X away from one side, you had to take X away from the other. This is the whole idea of it being a balance scale and what you do to one side, you have to do to the other. So if we're going to take one X away from here, then you have to take one X away from here and then do the same thing. And this group just started working on taking away a constant also. So rather than just taking away the variables, you could take five away from this side. And if you take five away from here, you're going to be left with eight. So if you have eight on this side, then you must have eight on this side. Then that makes the value of X four. And then you can plug that value back in the equation and check, and check your work.
That's a great thing. I'm just thinking like for some of the hands-on kids, it's a very great visual for them to s, to understand one.
They're all hands-on. All of them are hands-on in middle school and in elementary school. They're all.
I, I didn't learn algebra until I got this program. When I was teaching. And I was like, oh my god. I get it. It just makes so much sense.
So anyway, that's fourth and fifth, and a little bit of sixth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Can you just go to the next slide? The question's there. Okay, now you can go back.
Got it.
Thanks.
Okay. So jumping to seventh, so we're going to, I'll just briefly mention sixth. So in sixth, what the focus is, is ratios. So we're really concerned about, do the kids understand what a ratio is, how it differs from a fraction, and when we have equivalent ratios, what that means to a problem. And so sixth grade focuses on that. And so that when kids come to seventh grade, the big focus in seventh grade is proportional reasoning. And it's always been proportional reasoning, but the depth of proportional reasoning is very different now than it, than it was with Vermont standards. So in seventh grade, we care about be, having the students be able to recognize and represent a proportional kind of situation. So when you are trying to figure out if something is proportional, you obviously have to know what's not proportional as well. So we deal with that, we deal with both sides. From seventh grade, then we, and I'm going to give you some examples. From seventh grade, we go into what we call functions. And that's our algebra piece. And we deal primarily with linear functions, but just like in proportions, we need to know what's not linear to understand what really linear is. So we, we look at it from both, both sides of the coin. So we need to understand what a function is, and it's a rule, and you heard Karen talking about a rule and how we have an input which was, you know, on the, on the table was the, was the X value or the left side of that table, and the output is the, the right side of that table. So we kind of formalize that with more algebraic terms. And then we look at functions or these rules in algebraic terms, and we call those equations. We look at it graphically. We look at it numerically, just like you guys do, on a little, a little bit higher level. And then I covered that. So I'm going to show you what a really, what a task is that I start with in seventh grade, so you can go to the next slide. So one of the ways, what, what's helpful is that if you let students, or we let, we like to let students, we call it muck around with the math. We like to give context. We like to make it applicable to their life. And we let them make a lot of mistakes, and we let them, you know, talk about it. And so this is a task, it was two years ago, I think I did this, three years ago, iPad Air and iPad Mini. And is it proportional? So they know what equivalent ratios look like. They know how to set up ratios. And we often start with things that are geometric, that are, that are familiar with them. Because geometry is very familiar. Rectangles are very familiar. Squares are very familiar. And we like to approach proportionality in a geometric way first. And then we move into the more concrete, kind of nuts and bolts, algebra proportions. And so if I, and the task is we want to look at two dimensions, length and width, even though there's a depth. So it is three-dimensional, but it's seventh grade, it's intro task, we won't, but that's the extension, the three-dimensional piece. And so we ask, are these proportional? And so when we talk about proportionality, has anybody, you've all been to the fair, right? Everybody's been to a fair. You go to a mirror, those funny mirrors, and they make you look really tall and really thin, or really short and really wide. And so that would be an example of non-proportionality. So, so we kind of give them that context, and we say, well, are these two proportional to each other? In other words, if I blew this up, or if I shrink this down, would it look like this? Or if I blew this up, would it look just like this? And they have to do some calculations using the length and the width because I, we, it's, it happens to be very, very close. So, and can anybody tell which one is, are they proportional or not? Do you think they are? No?
Not quite.
No, they're not quite. They're very close. And if it was a square, it would be a one-to-one. The length to the width would be one-to-one. This one is more like a square than this one. This is more rectangular. So these are not proportional. So we talk about that. So that's kind of an idea of what it looks like in terms of an intro kind of task. All very doable because of what the work that happened before and the work from sixth grade. So then, so now I'm going to jump you up to eighth. So they have this proportionality. They really get it. They know, they know that when you look in a mirror and if you're really tall and really, really skinny, you're not proportional. And then we go here. And both Anna and Karen talked about patterns. And we love to work with patterns, especially when we're talking about functions. We're talking about rules. Again, this is an intro task. We, we started with this. And we asked the kids to study the tile pattern. So this was figure two. This was figure three, and this was figure four. And so the question is, what would figure one hundred look like? So some kids started drawing figure five, figure six. And I said, no, no, we're not going to, we'll be, that will be the end, by the end of the year, you'll get it right. And so, no, we need to find a way that we could look at a pattern here that's happening, and we could maybe come up with maybe some kind of a, a plan on how we could get to the hundredth figure. So we need a rule, again, just like what you guys work with. And we also need to know, you know, one of the things with, when we start something like this, we talk a lot about, what do we know? Oh, we know that figure two has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven blocks. And we know that figure three has, and we count them, eighteen. And we know that figure three has, and we count them, eighteen blocks, right? So we, we talk a lot about that, really, what do you notice, what do you wonder about this pattern? We spend a lot of time about that and then we set them loose. And they ha- their job was to answer these questions and create a poster that will show, explain, justify and connect your ideas. It's a pretty big task. So then, next slide. Hopefully it's the right one, okay. So th- I have the actual work over there, but um, so this was what the majority of kids ended up doing. So they copied the figures, to figure two, figure three, figure four, right? I'm gonna talk about figure three. And one of the things that kids have to understand is, when we talk about functions, what is the input, what is the output? And so i- and the input in this case is the figure number and it, because with every figure number, it ups the game in terms of how many squares there are. So your input is the figure number, your output is the number of squares. And they, so, so they've already, they know this by the time they're looking at their poster. And so they're trying to figure out what is the pattern and they, it was so interesting what they did. So I'm gonna sh- I'm gonna, oh unless you wanna try and figure it out for yourself.
It's okay.
Okay. So he, the pattern, see, the, the pattern was this, it was like two blocks here, two blocks there and then there was a block missing right here. Alright, so they, this, this group took this block and moved it over here. Okay? And then they recognized that for pattern, figure number three, it was two by three. Okay? And the X represents the figure number. So that's two X or six blocks. And this is a three by three square and it's figure three, so it's X squared. Man, sometimes a lot of kids said X times X and I said, well, what's X times X? And so we have to work through that, cause that's a little bit early for that, that thinking, but they got that. And then what's left, three things left. And so they ended up with this equation, X squared plus two X plus one, two, three. So then we say, okay, does that rule work for all situations and they proved it for figure four and then we proved it for figure two. So now they have an equation, well, actually they have an expression, don't they? They don't have an equation. And we changed the lingo from is the same as, we talk about is equivalent to in the middle school. So we talked a lot about, this is just an expression, but there's no output, this is my input, my X is my input, where's my output? And so this one needed an equals Y or equals the number of squares and that was missing here, but that's okay cause we're just, as we say, mucking around right now. So then they use this e- expression to figure out what figure one hundred would be and that is their output and it would be ten thousand two hundred and three squares in figure one hundred, which is pretty cool. So now then, so um, so I think I wanna go to the next slide. Okay, so I wanted to talk about the same task regarding the mathematical practices. There are eight mathematical practices that we care about or that are, that exist and we, these are really interesting pro-, these are really interesting and they make our lives, our, as teachers, um really int- really more exciting. Kind of more, it's more, it's definitely upped our game. And so I liked mathematical practice three for this particular project or s- this task. And ma- the math practice three says construct a viable argument and critique the reasoning of others. So this poster asked students to explain, justify and connect their ideas on the task through a poster. And then what the kids had to do, we've made a gallery walk in our hallway and kids went around all the different posters and they had stickies and they would write comments, so I'd agree or I don't really know where you got this, I, you know, this is, this is incorrect, I think it should be this, and so they kind of talked about each other's work. And then I, I sent them back with their stickies on the poster and they had to fix their poster or they had to say, no, this is really right because, and it was, it was like arguments in the classroom, which is really awesome, we love that. No, you're right, no, you're wrong and I'm like, oh no, let's figure this out. So, so that gets them talking about it, gets them passionate about it, they have some ownership to it. So now I, now I need the next slide. So this poster, I think, does a really good job of showing how this group, is a very advanced group, how they connected everything. And so when students start to make connections between different concepts, then you know they've got it. So for example, this particular group, and it's a shame you can't see this one, but the way they came up with this formula, X squared, X squared plus two X plus three equals Y, they had the actual equation. They started here. They, they created X plus two times X um plus three equals Y, which I can explain to you later if you would like to get a lesson over here. Um and then they, what they, what was so cool about this, they know the distributive property, they learned that in seventh grade. So, and probably earlier, and they, they fa- they expanded it, put it in expanded form. Now I gave them this lingo, I gave them that, I gave them that, but they're, they're, I wanna write expanded form and so everybody else is saying, I would need to write mine in expanded form. So they write it in expanded form and then they went to the table, right? Which is all their good training from their early grades. And so what's cool about the table is if you look at the second differences, so if this is a difference of one, three, five, the second difference is all a difference of two, so the second difference is two, it's a quadratic function. It will not graph as a straight line, it is not a linear function, it's a quadratic function. So these guys created a formula for, if you graphed it, it would be a parabola in the shape of a smiley face.
Wow.
So, and the, and so it's a pretty, you know, pretty advanced formula, but yet it makes perfect sense because they can, they started with the pattern. So they also had to explain how they c- came up with their reasoning and so people had to be able to read it and understand it and if they couldn't, they had to give them feedback on that. Um what else did they have? Then they projected, predicted the hundredth w- hun- the hundredth figure, they got the same answer, that was good. And then I asked them what the figure before, what the negative one figure was. What's figure zero and then what's figure negative one? Because figure positive one had six squares. So what does figure zero have and what does figure negative one have? And then I said, well, what does it look like? I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you, I just thought it would be kind of interesting to talk about it. Following the pattern, these numbers are right, but what it looks like, I don't, I don't really know, I don't think anybody knows. So that, that caused some, some debate. So there's eight mathematical practices, w- you know, we deal with more concrete ones like attending to presi- precision, so you want your, the students to be very precise, label their work, organize their work, make sure they're mathematically correct. But we also want them to be able to talk about it, to justify it, to argue about it, to explain it. And it, and when they can do that, then they, then you know they have it.
I, I think about those practices as something that we probably talked about a little bit before they were actually called eight mathematical practices.
Right.
But now I think it's something to hang our hat on.
Right.
When we do number talks every day, one of the things, one of them is justifying the um, or assessing the reasonableness of your answer. Um I always had the hardest time getting kids to buy into why it was important to make an estimate any, whether they were doing mental calculation or paper and pencil calculation. And now because I say, remember mathematicians have to be able to check the reasonableness of their answer, they know that they have to make an estimate because at the end, I'm going to say to them, so how do you know your answer is reasonable? And they have to be able to show me that they made an estimate. One of them is using mathematical tools appropriately, so we talk about calculators and rulers and protractors. Um it just sort of is this frame around everything we teach in math.
And if you kind of look at it, you kind of go, oh yeah.
That makes sense.
That, that, that does make sense, like looking at structure, like people that l- are good at, students that look, look at structure and can follow structures of problems and carry them from one problem to the next, tend to do well. Like all of these things makes, estimation has to be one of the most important of all, I think, for, if a student can estimate, then they're, they're gonna be in the ballpark. So, and not only do we assess our standards by s- by grade level, we assess our mathematical practices with our standards. So on, on our summative assessments, um we are assessing both, um and we're looking for evidence of both. And so, I mean, obviously student work would be part of our assessment process. We, we do a lot with formative assessments, formative assessments, I mean, e- everybody's familiar with formative assessments. I mean, there's, I don't need to give you na- but it happens all the time, every day. Um we do a lot with interviews, having a conversation one-on-one, having a conversation with a group, having, having discourse with amongst a group, um to the whole class, so all, overall dis- discourse. Math talks are a big part of now all of our um curriculum, so we had a, our, our sixth grade teacher, Eric, gave us um an, um a nice presentation at our PLC on how to do number talks, cause he does quite a few of them and so we were all, we'd be playing around with them and really, um we've learned quite a bit about it and kids are really responding to it. Um and also our local assessments we use to assess our kids.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that was great.
I'm done.
For all three, I'm wondering if the board will take a couple of minutes before we move on, just any questions for Karen and Anna and Karen? I mean, I, when I was in school, I was one of those kids who could hide in math class, my guess is having been in your class and then walk, you can't hide in your classes.
I was just thinking I might have learned some real math.
I, I know the, the phenomenon to understand um or see the value of estimating, those are hard things.
It's, it is a hard thing, it is, it is definitely.
I'm curious how much feedback, to give it a nice word, you get from parents who look at the math and go, what the heck? What are they doing? Because, you know, we all see things or a lot of us see things, you know, like, you know, stuff that gets passed around social media going, look at this insane thing that, that, that uh Common Core did, Common Core is the dumbest thing in the world, why do they do it? We don't understand, this is dumb. And I'm curious if you guys get how much feedback like that from parents who are like, I don't get it. What the heck are you teaching our kid?
The co- you know, when I meet with parents, one of the things is, I don't know how you're teaching them, especially when you get to double-digit, triple-digit addition and subtraction, I don't know how you're teaching them. And so what we've done at, in the elementary level is put like little videos out and we'll share videos with parents on how we're teaching these skills, cause parents wanna just jump in, teach that algorithm. Um and, and we don't want them to be doing that, we want them to have that um background. You know, you know, understanding the number system, understanding the base ten system. So yeah, you know, talking to parents about how are we teaching and, you know, sending videos to them has, has worked.
That's a great idea.
I think that the kids feel empowered about teaching their parents something that their parents don't know. We must be in that our team who um was just appalled a couple of weeks ago at the dinner table that her parents had gone through school and nobody had taken, taken the time to teach them to be efficient mathematicians and have all of these strategies they could choose from, rather than just stack the method, um which doesn't make any sense and doesn't show that they know anything about numbers at all.
Did you get a thank you note from the parents?
Um so I, one thing that's really helped for us is anytime we teach the kids a new concept, we do, at least on my team, what we call a notebook item and so we sort of call it like their mini resource. So when they're at home, they have their math notebook with them, their parents can go to their binder and see how they did it. We also post them online, so if their child didn't bring their math binder home, then their parents can go find it um on our website and look at it and see how we taught it. So then as they're helping their child, they're teaching it the same way we did, um rather than maybe the way they learned.
I'm curious, how new is this to you? Common Core came in and said, here's the new thing, was it a complete radical shift for you to say, oh my god, now we gotta teach, we gotta stop doing the stacking ad and we gotta do these other things? Were you already doing the other things and Common Core just kind of structured it?
Um I was already doing some of it, certainly um I have learned some new strategies um with Common Core, but I think we were already teaching conceptually anyway. What the Common Core does is it pushes the algorithm off a year. So in um fourth grade, kids learn multiplication, they don't need to know the algorithm until fifth grade. In fifth grade, kids learn division and a variety of conceptual methods for division, they don't have to learn the algorithm till sixth grade. So that's a difference, it sort of postpones the algorithm so they have at least a year to sit in something and learn it conceptually before they learn an algorithm.
I just wanna say one thing, besides you guys did a phenomenal job, but the district invested a lot of money into VMI back probably, Karen, what'd you say, seven, eight years ago?
Six.
Six?
That was probably a long period.
Really?
Yeah, it was six years ago.
That's been a while and I think.
Vermont Math Institute.
And I think that that actually brought us further ahead, faster. Uh it, it allowed us or, or forced us to conceptualize, teach conceptually, uh it was really a great thing. And I would say, I've had as many conversations as these three, I'm sure, around math, Don, but I've heard more people say what you said, which is, oh, almost like this light bulb goes on, like, I get it, the way that it's being taught now.
Well, thanks very much for joining us and keep up the great work, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question before you do that? I'm sorry, I was just, um, do parents say why and what do you tell them? So why not the way we all learned and what do you guys share?
I, you know, I, I probably get a lot of that because they, that would be the middle school, maybe earlier. Probably not in secondary, maybe today, I don't know, maybe they can't remember back that far, but um. I, you know, and I, I don't, you know, I'm very respectful of that, I mean, I, I understand that cause when I, my sons were in middle school, I wasn't a teacher, this is my second career. Um so, and I, they would bring home stuff and I'd go, whoa, that's, what's that, you know? And I guess I think that they, I have our, we have our kids for two years, first of all, we live. Our parents trust us, we have a very um intimate relationship with our parents. And so when parents say that to me, I think, yes, we will get to the algorithm. We absolutely will get to the al- the algorithm and they will have practice. But we think context makes life um more meaningful. And we think that when students have context and are able to play around with context before they're drilling and killing, which is kind of how I was taught, um that it makes more sense. And that at some point, and, and this is my favorite line, you know, your memory is good. And students with really, really good memories can memorize through Algebra one, but then they start to get into trouble, pre-cal, calc, right, pre-cal, Algebra two, pre-cal, calc. So you have to make sense and the only way you can really make sense of it is to think deeply about it, play around with it in different contexts. And so that, that seems to be okay, I don't ever say, no, I'm not going to do the algorithm or I'm not going to do practice. Um so, but I think I like to, as, as Karen was saying, you have to set them up first and so that they understand what they're doing and then you can have them do the practice. I've never had anybody, you know, maybe they've talked about me behind my back, I don't know. But I don't know, I haven't heard, I haven't heard anybody say anything.
But I think that's like a great answer to the why question, because I don't think, um, I think that that's as important as anything else we share with parents about how they might learn along with their kids.
You're right.
Is to help them understand why, it's not just the way we all did it.
Right.
And that makes perfect sense. For some people, the math will come really easily, putting it in context becomes a little different in it. You know, if it's in context, the math part of it might come more easily, whether or not that student's gonna go on with math forever or, you know, and get through what they need to.
Right, right.
I think that's a powerful message, thank you for sharing. I figured you have something brilliant to say about it, so thank you for sharing.
Well, thanks so much again for coming out, appreciate it so much. And this was live, so you can, you know, show that you, we can watch RETN for the next couple of weeks, you know.
Famous, thank you. Can I say one thing about science?
Sure.
Yeah. Because I administered it, um the inquiry, at least from what I saw for my students, and I can't speak to seventh, eighth grade, I don't know who takes it over there, but um the inquiry task that the fourth graders had to do last year required that they do this task and collect some data and they had to set up a table. And many of the kids who did it, the ones that I had in my room, set up their table incorrectly. They were, their data was correct, they were showing it correctly, but it's not the way they wanted the table set up. So um we have two students on our team who were partially proficient, very, very bright students. One of them got the highest score possible on the S VAC in math and um they both got a two on, they worked together. And so when I think about kids like that, I know the reason why they got the score they got. I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses, I know we could all do better, um but just something that I wanted to share with you when I heard that came up at the beginning. Um and the other part, I'll take responsibility for my team, we have thirty of the kids in that group and because we have to teach kids in multiple years, we teach the science, all of the earth science one year and all of the life and physical the other, so those kids hadn't had any of that science because they're all gonna get it this year. So again, I'm not making excuses, but we do, there's thirty or thirty-five kids on our team who hadn't had any of that science and I know a good portion of them set the table up incorrectly, so.
Yeah.
For whatever that's worth.
It's worth, worth a lot.
It is worth a lot.
I think it makes a huge difference again to why you can't base your judgment on how kids are doing on.
Sounds like a future editorial.
And one of them was my own.
Well, and at the end of the day, all this assessing is meaningful to the extent it informs instruction, not necessarily is, you know, altering what's happening because of the way it was administered.
Well, I think back as a math student, which was not a successful career for me, um in around third grade when it all started coming off the tracks. in around third grade, when it all started coming off the tracks, I can remember thinking, there's no way I can mem, if I have to memorize all of this stuff now, there's no way I'm going to be able to memorize all of the stuff that's going to come, because that's all it was. It was about memorizing, memorizing facts, memorizing-
And speed.
Algorithms.
And speed.
And doing it, and doing it fast. And, and in third grade going, it's not possible. Well, I hope, I think we found that helpful. And again, it's, it's a liberal dose of the means, but I think in order to really get your head ra, our heads wrapped around what does a performance rating of, you know, three look like, or four looks like, you were, you were seeing that tonight. So sometimes it's just, you need to have some context. And I think that that was helpful.
I also think what's exciting for me, what I've been really paying attention to in the last couple of weeks when I go into classroom is the discourse, really just focusing on that, the teacher language, the student language, the questions being asked by the students, by the teachers are just really-
The kid to kid.
The kid to kid. I mean, there's just some incredible discourse going on. Kids are expected to defend their answers, provide evidence in all subject areas. The practices in math, practices in science, the ELA work teachers are doing with kids, there's some really deep critical thinking going on and some, some amazing discourse.
I think it's amazing too to see, you know, just even through my own kids, you know, the blend you see across even the different subject groups. You know, I think about, yes, growing up and having, you know, the list of problems and, you know, the, you know, three plus four and, you know, you had forty of them on a page versus now watching how they're having to take the words and figure out what they mean and what, how do I make an equation out of that? What do I come up with? And being able to explain it and seeing that on the paper. So it's just as much the writing and the explanation as is the actual knowledge of the fact, even though that's important. It's, if you know how to get there, that's, that's just huge. That's how you solve problems. So.
I just, I'm fascinated when I think about the changes and how much more the kids can understand why they're doing things.
Well said, Rachel. And actually, I forgot to put this slide up there, but it is about the depth of, of knowledge that we're teaching kids and go slow to go fast. It's really making sure we take the time before accelerating or advancing kids, that they really have the fundamentals down. So thanks for allowing that to happen. I think that was, that was a job well done. So we've broken up this presentation, not, not unlike the monitor, the written monitoring report into three N's policies. And we're going to talk a little bit again about some of the means to get there, but then we'll get into some of the data that we've assembled for you tonight. It's quarter of eight, so this might have to be a two-part N's pol, N presentation, which we did last year, I think.
Yeah.
We wanted to, I actually had, I think, Founders, I threw them up there randomly. I think Ellen put them in sequence for me.
You guys are a well-oiled machine.
I love, I love working with these guys, you know. So anyway, we have, we have multiple examples. I'm going to ask Peter and Wendy and Kevin to go quickly through some examples of, of, again, alignment with the work that's happening in the classroom in the schoolhouse that are aligned with the themes associated with one point one.
So when I, ordinarily, when I speak to you guys, I have charts, I have graphs, I have numbers, I have DRA scores. So this is a whole different thing, which is really kind of nice and refreshing. If you think about the aspect of community, it's everything we do at EES. Everything we do is about who am I as a community member? What are my responsibilities as a community member? If you, even if you just look at our, we have three school rules. We take care of ourselves. We take care of each other. We take care of our school. I mean, that is really the, the very basic tenants of functioning within a community. We use responsive classroom in all of our classes, which, which is a, on a, on a macro level, teaching kids how, how do you function within a community? What are your rights? What are your responsibilities within that community, both to yourself and to your peers and to the building? I was at Endicott College in a college visit with my son, and I saw in the middle of the foyer of one of their buildings, take care of yourself, take care of each other, take care of the place. And I thought, wow, that's pretty cool. So throughout the year, we're always, we're always looking at, you know, how do, how do we organize around community? We have food drives going on. We have our peace and friendship coming up, our peace and friendship assemblies that come up in November, December. We have, and then we sort of feed, feeding into the global awareness of sustainability, our Fine Arts Committee brings in authors, brings in musicians that sort of give kids a glimpse of, of community outside of our little enclave. We currently have a visiting author, Melissa Stewart, who is, you know, just giving kids, again, it's a glimpse of what, what it's like outside in the world and how do you become an author. And I was at Needs Assessments all day, so I was not able to get in to watch. I'm hoping to get in for a little bit tomorrow to see some of her work. But we bring in a variety of folks like that throughout the year. We also have, uh, classes are doing Skype or Google Hangout with other classrooms throughout the country and throughout the world. So last year, there was, there was a great deal of excitement in one of the classes who had, who had just done a Google Hangout and, and someone stopped me in the hall and said, Mr. Frel, you know, I forget the town in Florida, but they have to have indoor recess if it gets below forty degrees. And so it was, but, but it really was, to me, it really was so, so summed up so perfectly that communities function very similarly across the United States. We just have different sort of stakes in the ground about where we're going, when we're going to go out. And so I, one of my comments was perhaps you should do a Google Hangout with someone in Nome, Alaska and find out what their thing is, you know, because it's probably, you know, thirty below. And, and then in health literacy, principal initiated wellness walks, I, I, that was, I just had to get out and walk because it was going a little bit. And so I started walking at recess and, and then I ended up with, you know, three kids and then six kids and then fifteen kids and then forty kids. And so we would just walk around and, and I'm doing it on my map, my fitness. So I'm, you know, two more laps, guys, and we've got a mile. And they're like, oh, how far is a lap? But really, much more, much more global is the whole PE, the whole health literacy that we are looking at, both in terms of physical and social, emotional. And, and you can tie community into that when you look at the walk to school days and the jump rope for heart. And it's, it's physical activity that is contributing to your community and to your sense of community. And also the social, emotional, our guidance, our school counselors are working constantly, they're working in classrooms, they're doing lunch bunches, they're doing individual counseling, they're doing small group, they're doing friendship groups, they're out on the playground, teaching kids how to join into a, into a group that's already playing. It's really, it's, it almost, it's, it would be hard to find anything we do that isn't really community oriented about teaching kids how to function within a community.
Thanks, Peter.
I could just repeat what Peter just said, honestly.
You took actually a little bit of a different approach to the question.
I did take a little bit of a different approach. Which, of which I've taken lots of heat about by my colleagues. So, aside, aside from the responsive classroom, the stuff that we're doing here, we're doing here at Founders as well. We actually have put together a team of student delegates to fine tune our school rules. So teams have developed their, or classrooms have developed their rules. And so they've determined a delegate, a student delegate representative from each classroom. And they are meeting with David Hoppe, Kelly Monahan-Smith, and Joe Rigo and myself next week to come up with our school-wide rules, something we felt we needed to fine tune as a whole school. There were a lot of great rules happening, but not a lot of consistency. So we felt as a faculty at the beginning of the year, we wanted to get that done. So that's something we're working on this year. So in terms of health literacy, there's a lot of germ study going on here at Founders. Mr. Marriott, last year, his classroom, and this is something he does every year. I had the opportunity to go in and observe. They do a lot of work investigating what germs are and where they live, testing parts of the building. Sometimes I don't want to hear the results, but he brings in an infectious disease professional from UVM, a nurse, and they use this, some sort of substance that they put on their hands. And they, if you turn a light, turn the lights off, it glows. So after they wash their hands, so they do all kinds of experiments with germs. And then they ma, make recommendations to myself and Jack, our custodian, for changes, letting us know where things are dirty. Some of the most obvious, like doorknobs, you know. So, yeah, so, pretty much anything.
The learning center tables.
So in terms of civic literacy or community, it really just goes back to giving back, a lot of what Peter was saying. We do a lot of that. There's just a few examples here with the Savio Button team. You know, they do a plant sale and they do a lot of collaborating with the Edge team over at the middle school to earn money for our, our greenhouse. Chris Gorman's class does a school store every year and they determine, they decide as a class where the proceeds are going to go. Last year, we had a student who lost a family member to cancer and they decided-
Bless you.
Bless you. They decided the-
Peter.
The money would go to the American Cancer Society. The Bacon Kitchen team did, made dog biscuits and cat treats and sold them to earn money for Potter's Angels Rescue. And they also did, what else? They do, oh, the Vermont Shoebox for seniors. So those are just a few of the very, lots of examples of community service kids are doing here across all grades. You know, financial literacy is something that a lot of classrooms work on. I didn't put the example in here, but Enterprise Day is something that fifth grade teams work on every year, where kids create their own products. They earn tickets to purchase the products at Enterprise Day. And it's such a fun day. All staff go and they get tickets and buy some of the things that kids have made. So they learn a lot about financial literacy there as well. An example of global awareness is freshwater engineering work that Sumaoto and Nicole Walsh's class did last year, where they researched, you know, issues of lack of fresh water in other parts of the world. And they designed projects where they made water filters. So some really cool stuff. They, you know, students are also doing a lot of Google Hangouts with different parts of the world, other states, countries. So there's a lot of that going on. Colleen Williams and Anne Pius are amazing at getting those set up with kids. And lots of teachers are doing those as well. So, um, our concerts and chorus, great stuff too.
You gave up all, I have nothing left.
You got it.
At least one of the concerts. So, in sports. So the EMS examples of learning we have up there, the first one I wanted to talk about was the peer leaders in the World of Difference organization that can and supported them in, in learning how to facilitate classrooms. But then it has really changed the culture and climate of Essex Middle School. There's a, a great story, and I'll share it quickly. It could go here, it could go later on, when we talk about the bullying and harassment and such. But last year, maybe you already shared it, but last year we had an incident where there was potential cyberbullying on Instagram or Facebook, some sort of social media. And, and within two days, there were over four hundred posts of responses from Essex Middle School children. And out of those over four hundred posts, there was nothing negative stated. It was all, stop it, this isn't right, I'm going to tell Mrs. Valby, who's the peer leader, leader. You know, so it was really, it was amazing. And I said to Mark today, I bet I couldn't find another school in our state that would have that same feel, middle school. It just doesn't happen. So it's great. And I really put a lot of that into the, the work with the peer leaders. But I also put in with a lot with the developmental design, which is really, now that it's happening, I don't know about PK, but it's happening kindergarten all the way up through, where before K through five, it's responsive classroom. When it comes to us, they change the name maybe so the kids don't feel so young. But it really is very similar. So they start the day off in homerooms. What we've done this year, which is a little bit different, is that every professional staff member is also assigned to a homeroom. So there are two, two adults, if you would, in every single homeroom, which is great. So Dan Aroldi from DTE Design and Tech, he's involved in a homeroom. It just makes it that much more meaningful. And it's been great. It's been great to watch. The financial economic part there, the FCS just, does put it into their curriculum around financial planning. I wanted one about all the other stuff that people are talking about, but I won't. Civic literacy?
A lot.
No, because we don't. It's almost eight o'clock. Civic literacy, let's get ourselves on track. One of the things that, it's just the service learning component, and it actually ties in nicely with, with where we're moving with, with personalized learning plans that Rachel was talking about earlier. Now that the entire sixth through eighth grade and right up through is going to be doing personalized learning plans, the service learning component is being built right in with that. And it's been terrific. So in years past, we've done everything from empty bowls to holding different cake raffles, but also getting outside of the school and doing more community service type pieces as well. So that's nice. And the final one on there is that the PE folks, as well as our adventurer team, are working collaboratively to upgrade the wooded trails out back for the cross-country season and, and the running season for the cross-country team. So that's a nice, a nice piece for those two, or those two groups of people to be working together. It's nice. But I mean, and, and, but like these guys, I mean, it could go on forever. We have, they were, they were hatching trout in Sheila Bochar's room last year. You know, it's just, there's so many things, like everything our teachers do really ties into these pieces. And it's not like we just sit there and randomly throw things out there. It really does, every piece fits in, from author visits, like Peter said, to our concerts, to everything.
Thanks, Kevin. The next slide is, the slide, you have it in your, in your written report, and it has to do with the, the scores of, of kids at the end of, of last year. Well, actually, let me just, let me just see if I, how's this thing work, Ellen? Whoops.
Left button.
To go back.
I've got definite lack of proficiency.
I, yeah, I know. I was just wondering where the pointer was, that's all.
No, it should be in the middle.
I did that and that's what it, well, anyway, these are the cohorts of groups two, five, and eight. And I spoke a little bit about it in my written report. We also wanted to add the ninth grade in there as well, and a little bit of narrative in the written report on, on why the scores are, are, as they are in, in ninth grade. There's very little, there's very little sort of variance that suggests that there's a, a big change in, in performance. We went, if you've noticed, rather than, we've gone to a different way of reporting. So the June of 2014, if we use second grade as an example, that was the end of first graders, their first grade experience. And in 2015 is at the end of their second grade experience. So it's the same cohort of kids, but we're going from year to year. So in between that are obviously summer, summer weeks, if that makes sense. Because we've gone, now that we've gone to a two, two times a year reporting system, it felt like it was a good time to change from, go to a year-to-year progress report for, for the monitoring report. So you can see, I mean, the, I claim that I'm in compliance. If we're at eighty percent, or these are threes and fours, you know, we're, it's not really Bs and As, but it gives you some sort of context. These are the kids that are at or above the standard. And that's the percentage of kids in those three grade levels that have, have met or exceeded the standard. So I think that those, those, those scores speak to the abilities of our kids. I've also mentioned, and the work that's being put into the, in the teaching by educators. I think that we're much more on the same page. I guess hearing from Kevin and Peter and Wendy in this regard, I think our calibration is stronger. I think we have a better, there's more agreement now on what being proficient means. I mean, I think three years ago, I think we had a lot of variance in what that meant, even including, some teachers think three was meant- even including, some teachers think three was meant, or four meant they were at a higher grade level, which isn't necessarily the truth. So we've, we've done a lot of work in the area of calibration. And I think those scores really reflect where, where kids are today. So unless you have any questions about, we can answer them at the end of the presentation, unless you have any questions about these scores at this, at this point in time.
You mentioned you're going to address the ninth grade scores at some point, not necessarily right now.
Quite a draw.
Yeah, I mean, one of, I could very briefly, was I mentioned a couple of things in the written report, Dan. And one of them is they're not standards based. And what, what is in a B and an A, because they're not, they're not measuring it with a rubric one through four. There might be other things included in what it means to get a B at the high school. And it may not include performance. It might be how many times you contribute, you got your homework in on time. You know, some of those affective parts of, of their responsibility in the classroom. So it's not all just academic performance, two, five, and eight, or K eight, I should say. It's all about the academic performance. All the other ancillary things are important, but they're not including the aggregate score.
The only other thing I would mention too is that in a grade-based system, you're generally taking all grades sort of as equal. I mean, some may be worth more than others. But in a growth-based system, such as a standards-based, you're looking at growth in the standard. So you may have a couple of hiccups at the beginning of the year, but by the end, you've got it. And those hiccups don't get into your grade. You see what I mean?
So they quiz you fail in September, doesn't destroy your grade.
And that's probably the biggest difference, I would say, between those two numbers. That the numbers kind of stay with you in, in the ninth grade end of it. And the, the numbers that came to it, we're looking at, at the end of the year, what's the growth of the student, what do they know right now? If they know what they're supposed to know, they're going to get a three or a four. And it's not going to take into effect the journey.
What's really exciting, and Kevin has a big role in leading this with colleagues, our colleagues at ADL and at the high schools, is I think that we're pushing up, I think changes are going to happen because it's, it's happening in, at the middle level. So everything from personal learning plans to performance-based grading, which is going to be a requirement by two thousand twenty. I think we're starting to muck around, as Karen said, in some of this work. And it's going to be transformative, because at some point, kids are going to enter ninth grade saying, this is not how I learned, this is not how I get feedback. And, and the high school is aware of that and are committed to the work, but it's, it's a, it's a long traditional way of rating kids' performance that we're trying, that we're pushing up against. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
We wanted to go quickly over a couple of things around preschool, because it is pre-K eight. I'll ask Jessica to chime in if I, if I miss anything. She's actually put this slide together. But one of the things, just to call your attention to, is the blue table. See that, over to the right, which shows our participation rate in preschool over the last five years, where in two thousand eleven, twelve, when we first started talking about preschool, we had fifteen kids that were enrolled in an hour, over a hundred kids, from zero partnerships, a center-based program only at the elementary school, to over twenty partnerships in this community, in this catchment area where our kids attend. So it's a really amazing work, exciting work that Jess has led over the last three years. And these bullets really identify the things that we're, that we're proud of, that we continue to focus on and build. Act sixty-six had a huge effect on participation, one which in some ways we rolled the dice, if we recall, when we developed the budget last fall, we were saying, how many new kids can we expect? Well, guess what, we were, we were off.
We advertise really well.
And so, and again, you, Jessica's done a tremendous job with, with Aaron McGuire and just from Chitting and Central, really talking about the importance of one sixty-six. And they, we just have had a lot of participation. We'll talk about it more during budget development. Unfortunately, it means there's, there's an impact in terms of expense, but it also, if, it should have, it should be neutrality when it comes to taxes, because our ADM increases.
New person.
Sorry.
That's a pre-K partner.
Pre-K partner.
What is it?
Yeah.
So they are, right now, under one sixty-six. They're pre-approved preschools, which means they meet a whole bunch of criteria. They're five stars accredited, they have a certified educator.
Oh, so these are like outside preschool, okay.
And they're outside, right. Outside of all that.
Thank you. I was just trying to figure out what kind of person that was, okay. That makes more sense, thank you.
And because of Timler. So the thing I wanted to add that's not on this slide, that's neat, is, is just the, the difference it makes for some families that, so Act sixty-two, we provided two thousand dollars tuition reduction to families. And then Act one sixty-six, we're providing three thousand, which is going to be the state rate. So everybody provides three thousand. But, but families that say sent their kids to a childcare because they couldn't afford preschool, and now with that tuition reduction, then they can enroll their kids in a preschool. So to think about the number of kids that'll be coming kindergarten that are attending a pre-K instead of just a childcare or a grandparents' house, or, not to say that those are all bad, but, you know, but they're with peers, they're receiving, you know, early learning. So it's pretty neat.
So we wanted to show up, go ahead, Dan.
Quick clarification on that one hundred. Are those four-year-olds who are expecting, obviously some are going to move, it's not perfect, are all those hundred kids that are expecting to be in our kindergartens next year? Or is that?
Three and four-year-olds, I don't know.
Okay, so, so roughly fifty of those we'd expect to land in our school. Fifty of them will still be in preschool, no me another.
I don't know what the percentage is, if I can find that.
But that's, that's the idea. Those aren't all headed to us next year. So we can't say.
I don't know, Dan. Sometimes it feels like it.
I think probably the higher number, Jessica, is probably four-year-olds and three-year-olds. Because three-year-olds are still, you know, they're, it's young, but.
So we, we would anticipate at this point, just a real rough, about half of our kids coming into kindergarten next year will have had preschool.
Yeah, I think in fact, our numbers are under the six, last year, I think it was in the six, mid-sixty percent range that had a high-quality preschool experience of a minimum of ten hours.
Okay. And that's, I'm assuming, increasing over the years.
Yeah, and the next slide is going to talk about, we're, we're starting to track indicators, whether or not this investment is going to have, is going to be worthwhile. And we think it, we think it clearly does, but.
And nationwide, other states that have implemented universal pre-K, usually it maxes out around eighty percent, because you have stay-at-home moms, you have people who go to grandparents, and that won't change regardless of whether or not they get money to go elsewhere.
Okay. So this is four years of kindergarten readiness data. This is, this last year, school year fourteen, fifteen, was the last year of this version of the survey. I haven't seen the new survey that was implemented this year, Peter, at your school. But within the first six weeks of school, kindergarten teachers are not mandated, but are strongly encouraged to fill out a readiness survey based on what they see in their kids during the first six weeks. So keep that in mind, this is the first six weeks of school. I was going to include, and I, I did not, an example of what that survey looks like. Perhaps, Peter, you can provide a little, a little bit of that insight in terms of what, what teachers are measuring when they look at social emotional development, one of the sorts of things that they're.
There's, there's a, the questionnaire itself is, I'm not sure how many, there's a lot of, there are a lot of items on it. And I believe it's sort of designed as a, you answer, you answer one question about social emotional development, and then ten questions later, you get a very similar question, because they're testing, I think, reliability of answers. What they'll ask about, you know, is the child able to separate from parent? Is the child, you know, without, you know, major to-do? Ask questions about friendships, about ability to play independently, about ability across a wide range. But it tends to be, what is the child's sort of individual profile? And what is the child's profile in academic, social, approach to learning, et cetera, in terms of working with peers?
So I, typically the first six weeks, you know, is when kids are getting adjusted. For those who have had some type of experience in high-quality preschool, are not going to take as much time to learn how to sit in a, in a community, in a small group on their bottom and participate without standing up and wandering on the classroom. So those are, again, kids will learn that, some more quickly than others if they've had that experience. I met with an early educator who works in the town today about a licensing matter. And she told me that the three- and four-year-olds that she supported are just starting to be able to show how they can sit in the circle. So it is a developmental readiness thing, but these are data that we want to track. You can see that cognitive development, we're, you know, we're pretty much where the state is. You can see we've got some low numbers here, which may mean any number of things. But what's important to understand is by the, that same group of kindergartners last year, that suggested that they, only half of them were cognitively ready for the rigor of kindergarten classroom, kindergarten experience. By the end of the year, that same group of kids in the area of reading math were, were at or above the standard. That's our, that's our measure, if you will, indicator for cognitive development. So wow, look at that, fifty percent by the end of the year, as measured by our local assessment plan, they're right where they need to be.
I think a lot of those numbers, if you go back, I think our kindergarten teachers are, they're, they're expecting more and more from their students. And so I think it's, it becomes difficult for them sometimes to shift from where, where I want them to be at the end to where they're coming in now. And I think there's a sort of a collective, and then they, and then they get underway and things level out.
Yeah.
Okay. Don, did you have a question?
No, that just makes sense.
So I want to move into En's Policy one point two. This is where we try to capture data examples of kids' ability to be creative and innovative and critical thinkers and problem solvers, communication and collaboration. And one of the things I look forward to in a pre-K twelve district is I think there'll be many more examples of this as kids get older. And we're a little bit challenged by that in terms of an empirical way on how do we present that, that makes sense to our community. So these are just, again, it took us a minute and a half to brainstorm a lot of things that are going on in the district and in our schools that really support, that happened, you know, those habits of mine that we're trying to instill in kids. And I'm sure if we spent another five minutes, we could generate another, another column. But these are areas that we believe allow kids to grow and, and learn outside of the, you know, our regular classroom environment, if you will. What I'm really encouraged, as in these three domains, is that we're starting to see some, some pretty neat, interesting, different type of learning opportunities than doing calisthetics for thirty minutes in the corner. You know, I think that our PE teachers are getting their heads wrapped around the new national standards and how does a learning experience outside of the gymnasium? I don't think I've seen our PE teacher from Founders, except for rainy days, even outside, in, in the gymnasium. He's very focused on building his, his community outside and those types of things, the trail work. Another example, I think our, the Journey Blaine, our art educator, Michelle Bodgy, the, you know, the work they're doing, you know, showing their, showcasing kids' work is much more evident around the schoolhouses and in our communities than it ever has been before. But the, this celebrating Creative Minds Festival at the, at the high school, which is a K twelve event, has really gotten to be a big, big community deal. We're going to have the parade in February, a parade of lanterns, which is going to be really cool. Again, a K twelve initiative. So a lot of these, what you would consider to be typical curriculum opportunities or learn opportunities are really changing in those areas as well. STEAM, we had a big STEAM day at the elementary school last year. Peter, Ellen and Kevin have been working with one of our educators to create a STEM, working with Dan Araldi, and starting to create a STEM program, real-time dedicated to teaching kids. I think twice, was it sixth graders, Kevin?
During their exploratory.
With a Makerspace, one of the old Edge classrooms, kids are building things, taking things apart. So all these things are really, these learning opportunities are really important for our kids. And these are just a sampling of, of examples. So we'll go through some quick slides here. We just went back two years to show, yes, athletics are important. All the things that we just, that one point two is, has a lot of these opportunities for kids to grow in these areas. You can see that our numbers have jumped. I'm also curious, I was talking to Kevin today, about why we have so many more female athletes than we do male athletes. I'm not sure what that's about, but that's kind of a neat, neat piece of data. Actually, there's one more fall sports offering as well, or a winter.
Cheerleading.
Cheerleading.
Field hockey. Yep, it's those two.
Yeah, cheerleading and field hockey, yeah.
I mean, I.
Those are the three that pretty much make up the difference.
There's baseball.
Right.
But it's also, you know, not, just beyond this, so many of the kids also participate in league sports around, you know, between soccer and hockey and figure skating. And so even beyond this, I, I would be surprised to find very many students that don't do something.
It would be a much lesser number.
And when I walk, I know it's a little bit more challenging for adolescents who are starting, and their bodies are changing and a little bit more, you know, of a risk to, to be physical. But, you know, when I go walk through or walk by gymnasium, it's a very inclusive environment. And, you know, sitting on the sideline is not acceptable. Obviously, teachers are sensitive to that. But I, when you think about the activities, these teachers are engaging kids in PE, everyone can be an athlete to some level. So I think the numbers also reflect the philosophy of our, our PE department, that all means all and that you can perform at the level you feel comfortable performing at. Music participation, the last two years, you can see last year was three eighty-six. And we're four oh-four this year. That number.
Is that all, that's the whole column out of the Founders, that middle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure I, yep, thank you.
We've been interested, Kevin's been tracking this number. We had fewer sixth graders this year, Kevin, is that right?
This year, for whatever reason, they just didn't come out for, for band. And our seventh and eighth grade numbers went up quite a bit. And our sixth grade numbers just didn't. And they did a, they tried. So this year, in particular, Bob is actually going over more often. And he's helping out with Tyson and doing some instructing. He's actually going, I think Tyson's leaving for a little while.
Yes.
Right? He's, he's on paternity leave coming up. So Bob's going to go over and do the lessons for the horns. So it's, I mean, there's no better way than to entice people to come over than to be a part of that community.
Does, do the middle school students go over to Founders at all to work with the kids, to?
Not, not that I've.
They come over to perform.
Yeah, they perform the concerts twice a year. But they do not go over and just.
As some kind of mentoring thing?
Nope, not a bad idea, a good idea. I could throw it to Bob, see what he thinks.
What's really impressive with all of these numbers, that you saw with our math teachers, the math teachers, that their, the expectations are high. And the academic realm, sort of be able to juggle outside of after-school activities, knowing that there's a, a pretty big workload for these young kids, is pretty impressive that they're still coming out. And I think over a third of your kids, Kevin, participate in some activity after school.
Absolutely.
You don't have the cavalry club on there.
What's that?
You don't have the cavalry club on there. I realize they're all in chorus.
They're all in chorus.
Oh, I remember attending the Jazz Fest last year and this one year.
I'm also really impressed with these numbers. I think we all should be impressed with these numbers, the expanded opportunities. Again, this is a commitment on the part of educators at EMS, who after working with kids all day, sign up to be a coach or a ment, or a mentor or someone who leads a group, a club. And so, I mean, I think that's just phenomenal, the amount of kids that are participating in those types of activities.
Chris put it, I didn't look at it, was volleyball, which hosted, I think we had, I don't know, six teams? Remember that?
That was huge, the gym was.
Yeah, I don't see it up there.
It was monstrous. I don't know if you put it in the sport, I don't think it was.
We have volleyball on the sports page.
What's that? It was, it was a club, because it's not a, it's not sanctioned by VPA yet. So, I mean, that right there has, my gosh, it was, it was amazing, the number of kids that were playing that.
Yeah.
And then we, this year's going to be Quidditch, that's the newest club.
Quidditch?
Pretty cool. It's pretty cool to see the kids running around with their broomsticks.
So again, it's a great indicator of, you know, the, the middle school's efforts in putting time into developing those opportunities. I also want to just put a, a plug in for our excellent after-school programming with the Y in Park and Rec. The Y in particular has really taken responsibility with Wendy and I meeting with them over the last couple of, last year and a half about generating or developing an educational component. I think I sent a flyer to the Board to Board package a couple of meetings ago about some of the educational opportunities they're doing after school. And that's just, again, just a really great commitment on their part to extend learning beyond the school day. So I want to move into one point three. This has to do with the habits of mind to navigate school and life experiences. We're going to spend as much time as we can tonight, but we're going to come to the end here pretty quickly. So this will be a two-part presentation, if, if that's okay. So we'll probably get through a little bit, we'll bring it back in early November.
I was looking actually at the calendar, and November ninth has just, it looks like, three point two in budget planning assumptions. So I think there'd be time to do that.
Okay.
Does that work for all of you guys? The alternative probably is to.
Go eleven?
You know what, I told these guys, yeah, eat thirty.
Yeah, and I think we don't wanna short shift the conversation part of it.
I agree.
Yeah.
Are they interested in joining us on the night?
Uh, I, we'll see, yeah.
We are such a fun group, should I bring snacks?
So, this comes right off the, the standards based report card. Again, same methodology, end of last year or review second grade into first grade and what they look like at kids' performance at the end of second grade. So again, very impressive numbers in terms of kids' readiness or proficiency in any one of those given areas. I think teachers are not tough raiders, but they expect a lot from kids. And they, they don't, if the kid is not performing, they're gonna let the kid know that. We continue to administer the end of eighth grade exit survey. Maybe I can defer to Kevin in terms of, you know, he's looked at this data and anything that you've thought about and have talked about with teachers, Kevin?
What was that again?
Anything you've thought about or talked about with teachers in terms of this table and if it speaks to you in any way that we haven't already described in years past?
One of the things that I, that jumped out with me was comparing twenty fourteen and fifteen and to be self-directed in my learning. I thought that was interesting, that it went from a sixty-eight to an eighty-one, which is a pretty significant. But it also brings about where we are with our PLPs and thinking about that with our learning and that we're more invested in our, and children are more invested in their learning. So I just, it was striking to me that I'm still befuddled on the guide and lead others, but I think that that number's going to, to increase as we continue with the peer leaders and that, and that's growing. Chris Dumichel is actually starting up another leadership group with the athletic, very similar to the high school athletic council, we're bringing it to the middle school. So I think that that number is actually going to, to start to, to pick up, given more opportunities for that to, in a structured way, take place and learn. But, yeah, that's what I was-
Okay.
Same thing with the managed goals and time. It, you know, when you think about the PLPs and what that can do, it really fits nicely.
I had two eighth graders come visit me last week, I don't think I've shared that with you, Parker and Liam, who want to redo the basketball court outside and they just-
Definitely, they came.
And, uh- But what I was impressed with- No. And the scope, I mean, it's just really admirable that they wanna take that on, but just the questions they generate, they're just, you know, very, very thoughtful. And it's gonna be a, I don't know how far we're gonna get down the line, but it's, it's gonna be a big project. And to take that on as a part of their PLP, I mean, I think it was just really, speaks to the kids, kids' commitment at EMS to, you know, try to make change happen. This is a question we always ask about how confident are they to say goodbye to us after ten years? They're leaving a nest. So I like to add up the four and five column together. It shows you the percentage of kids that feel they're ready for ninth grade or they're ready for the next chapter in their life. And I, I believe those numbers speak highly to the preparedness of our, our eighth graders for ninth grade. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to stop now?
Jessica's like, really?
Cause it's twenty-five after eight, do you wanna do some, some foreshadowing, Jessica? Cause there's like four or five slides here and then we can just sort of call it a night in terms of this presentation.
The next, um, the next four or five slides are gonna talk about MTSS, our multi-tiered system of sports. And so the first year I came in, two thousand twelve, thirteen, we went to Killington for the best conference. And basically we did like a self-assessment, current reality, where are we? And it was all over the place. So our groom, uh, over the next, whatever, four years, basically went from that to now, we have consistent language, process, procedures. We have a new, um, consistent tool to monitor progress, track data, tons of groups set up. Like Kevin was just talking about the peer leadership group, Velocity Boys Group, there are tons of groups in each school, um, interventions that have been- So it's pretty cool, um, for the social emotional intervention. So that's just gonna be explanation of the evolution of that. And just sort of a, a look at what the tool is, what we monitor, how we use it to put groups together and what we do with the data. Sort of, and what's neat is that we have, um, we're looking at all of this and the data as a building and as a district. So within the buildings, they, so Founders just did a, um, presentation here where they really break it down and disaggregate into, you know, by grade level, by class, individual students, what interventions have been used. An intervention, but then also kids who are exceeding, who, you know, good role models and, um, different professional development for teachers or where we can use coaches. So we're just gonna talk about all that.
One of the, one of the things that I've been impressed with is the, the tools, the instruments that are being created and changing as we wanna go deeper into the message value that's inherent in any behavior. So it's not just about busting kids cause they're screwing up, but there's always, there's message value in that. And so the, the tools that are being developed are allowing educators led by these guys to go deeper into some of those conversations. And, and I really feel it belongs with one point three because without that ability to self-regulate and make good decisions and take social, take responsibility for your behavior, all of the great stuff we see in terms of academic output is not going to happen. So MTS, that's just one part of the conversation, the social emotional growth is actually an academic piece as well that, that fits with it too. But the work has been really important and it's been impressive to see it happen as a district.
I just wanna say one thing, and that it's a screener, which we hadn't had a screener. So we've had, we have plenty of screeners for reading, plenty of screeners in the academic area, but we didn't really have the screeners for the behavior. So you're, you're waiting for somebody to do something as opposed to being ahead of it. And having Hoppy and, and Falby and all them to create these groups for people, these opportunities, these structured learning environments for kids has just been incredible. And when you get to the behavior data, you're gonna see that it's working.
Yeah, I mean, saying the biggest shift probably from two thousand twelve to present is, um, we had a planning room. Kids would do something and then it was processing and going back to class. And now it's look at the data, identify students in different tiers, um, create groups and then teach them what we want them to know and be able to do as citizens.
Right, and we use Green's work, Ross Green, and his philosophy is that all children can do well. You know, so that they are lagging the skills to do well. So our job is to teach not just reading, not just math, but teach them the skills to do well academically as well as socially. And, and that's been a huge shift in the thinking, I think, over the last three years, in particular four maybe, with, with the advent of, or the, the eliminating of all those things that you're talking about. Sending them out.
I mean, the other thing is that it all cuts across all social strata, you know, I mean, these are just not the kids who typically profile out as being kids who are gonna at risk. This is, these are, all of our kids at some point are gonna make the wrong decision or are gonna develop the wrong habits of mind. So thanks for that foreshadowing, we'll bring it back. I know there's a lot of content, I think we had thirty-four slides and I cut a half a dozen of them out, I guess. But we felt we wanted to tell a little bit of a story tonight and then we can, we can finish it up on the night.
And hoping, maybe we can check in with RETN and see where they would normally come at a meeting later. They might be able to join us on the night, so we'll check on that as well, so that people aren't left hanging on the remainder of the results. No, that's right, we'll create the firestorm of folks joining us. But all of these things sound like I hear the story going all the way through, the talk initially of the responsive classroom and then how that creates a culture and environment where students are citizens in their own classroom and providing the support to help them be citizens as they go and they're joining through multi-tiered systems of support. It's, you know, I think we really enjoy having the opportunity to see this. And I think what we need to remember to do, Mark and all of us, is next year, put two meetings on the calendar for our ends policy, which I think now, this is the second year in a row, we've realized the content and the covering a whole year's worth of growth in so many different areas is more than one meeting's worth. But I think it was good to have set the context particularly in the update to your strategic plan. I think, well, it may require you folks to join us for more than one meeting. I'm very appreciative of your time here, I know.
Well, for those who can, it might be a bowl of spaghetti at Mimos or something on me, you know. I know, have I said that before?
Maybe I should just have the pizza delivered.
I've never said it in front of the camera, though.
Deliver the pizza.
Was it really?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Hey, I'm making a note that I must be responsible for some version of dessert, I think. Oh, my goodness.
Promise.
Well, I will thank you guys and thank you, Mark and Mark, that we sort of noticed we were gonna be way over and probably also run out of time for our more engaged questions and comments around it, so thank you all.
Thank you for your wonderful work.
Dylan, thanks for coming out.
To get this glimpse into this great work.
I have a new Odyssey, like, fun genius, they gotta get a paper across the American table.
So what is the pattern in our new table? And how are we gonna bridge the gap?
I thought I was supposed to do that.
Exactly, I'm a little better than her, I'm a little better. How are you gonna do that? My middle schoolers don't know what to do.
Oh, goodness, that was-
Five peers, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Lance's biggest problem in math was he could look at something, know the answer, he didn't wanna bother showing his work. It's like, that's a waste of time.
You know?
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
I think the kids that struggle the most with that are the ones that, they can, they think it, they look, they do that thinking in their head. Like, I think about some of the strategies and how growing up, that's what, those are things I would just automatically do and now they're-
Okay. Now they're teaching.
And now it's just hard for kids who see that to write it down, to show other people.
I know it's right, why do I have to bother showing how I found the answer?
Or do the estimate, because they got the right answer, why do I have to do the estimate?
What gets me is how, how rigorous second grade is. You know, I don't know about you, but I wasn't, you know, I don't think I was doing that in second grade.
I remember being in Mrs. Perez's first grade class during math and just having the kids explain three different ways to solve a problem cause I would be there during math and three different ways to give them to the answer, you know, and, and these kids would come up with, with it. And I'm thinking, I never thought on that level at all. I was learning, put these two blocks here and one more and I had three.
We weren't encouraged to talk about our thinking.
No. No.
Some of that metacognitive-
This is how you add, this is what you-
Yeah, but what do you really think about it?
No, you're right. Exactly, and how do the numbers relate to each other?
How'd you come up with that?
That's the relevance, why would you need to know it? I think it's probably why I asked the question of if parents are asking why, because I think that's hard for those of us who either found math easy or didn't find math easy or, you know, related to it or didn't, cause, so, okay, wait a minute. The kid who's saying, I blocked this, I don't need to write it down, needs to hear the why. It's important to really be able to talk about how you approached it for when they get to the stuff that's harder and their thinking isn't as intuitive. And it's pretty powerful, Karen Neese's message was really powerful and I think that's-
Like, yeah, I, it was actually the problem on Facebook that I saw this year was exactly one of those, where the kid got the answer exactly right. They said, is this a reasonable answer why? And the kid lost some points because they didn't estimate. They lined it up and did the exact math, as they know the skill was estimating, not lining it up and getting the exact answer. Parent blew up. But the thing that I, I just wanna say that, that I noticed, that I thought really speaks well to what you've done for the last six, five?
Seven and a half.
Whatever.
Seems just like it.
You and I have been here almost exactly the same amount of time, was both Kevin and seventh and eighth grade Karen basically saying in their own way, oh, they've already said everything, I do the same thing. The fact that the third person to speak said, I'm doing the same thing those two are doing, really speaks to the continued evidence of that vertical alignment.
Pre K eight, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was-
Just the acknowledgement of, and again, this is not, this is all genuine, I mean, they know what the teacher before them is doing because it's an aligned curriculum, it's an aligned performance assessment system.
And then it's, it's neat to see that then going into the cognitive behavioral stuff as well. So I think you've been, you've been doing that with the academics, working on that for-
This is a lot of big work, I can't wait to talk about it, yeah, it's good.
It's powerful.
So thanks, Dan, for that feedback.
Any other thoughts or comments for Mark before we leave this as our clipping?
Can't wait to see the conclusion.
I know.
Well, you see, you've got a sneak preview.
We'll get to study some more, we got a sneak preview and then we'll get to have more conversation around it. Thank you very much, Mark.
You're welcome.
I know that this is probably the biggest body of work that comes together over the course of the year.
Well, it is, and it's hard cause we're all so busy in Lake Maury and, you know, it's just, everything's going every which way, but these guys are great.
Yeah, it was, it was really terrific.
I hope you sense there's a, there's a sense like there's, it's congenial, but it's also collegial. I mean, they have, we have fun together and they're focused and hardworking.
I was trying to figure out if it was the March spell, it was the Three Stooges that I was trying to-
Well, whenever you sit next to Kevin, look, you're in trouble.
Well, I was wondering if they got together about the purple again, cause I think last, oh, weren't they all were purple?
I think I may have shared with you, but this is the first time in five years, they are meeting now every other week for an hour and a half. I mean, it's, we finally got to that level of, you know, that, we don't, they meet as a, as a triumphant, which is, was a big step.
Oh, just the three of them, so outside of your leadership meetings once a week?
Yeah, every other week, they, yeah. We meet once a week, but every other week they meet for an hour and a half.
They meet separately.
So this system stuff, they're comparing those, so, yeah.
They're their own little PLC.
Yeah, and I stay, I give them-
Which is awesome.
And I trust that, you know, that the work they're doing, cause again, it's not clandestine, but, you know, they need to talk as a group. And, uh, yeah, share, share some strategies without me peering into it all the time.
I'm guessing for families and students, it's feeling more cohesive as they transition among buildings as well.
I would hope so.
To sort of have a lot, a lot of the same language I heard as I listened to them. So that has to impact the experience.
The only way though, that Ellen and Jessica fit right in too, though, it's just, it's on part of it.
But three, four years ago, Don, it would be less principal talking, it'd be more central office talking.
I know, I remember.
Yeah, so we've shifted it from district folk guide to building-based leadership, yeah.
And I think, um, going back probably when we first got here, eight years ago, what was shared from principals' reports before we were doing monitoring reporting of, of ends policies was a little bit of a postmortem on sort of what's gone on in the building for the last month. So we monthly have those reports and, um, the context for sort of what's going on or the so what part of it, not that that wasn't an interesting look into it, especially if you didn't have children in those buildings, but, um, there was very little context or connecting the dots on what that means or what's, how does that fit into the bigger plan? Or how's that impacting the experience for students? So it was a, a very static report and this, these reports feel to me to have much more context and much more strategizing around what we've seen and what we're doing in response, or, you know, what we're doing and how it's impacted outcomes. I feel more connected to the data.
Right.
Well, I also know, I could tell you that we had, I had four other, five other groups of people who would have come tonight, school counselors, teachers of English, language arts, social studies and science people. They're so comfortable and proud of what they're doing, they're ready to start talking more about it. We would have been here for four hours, but, yeah.
Would have been interesting.
Yeah.
It'd be a fun showcase maybe at some point, not, it'd be hard to fit into a board meeting, but I wonder how parents may be responsive to sort of the that in like, I wanna hear more about math.
Yeah.
Join us and, and teachers spend so much time all day around this that it would be a lot to ask in lesson, a very thoughtful way to figure out, kind of like a showcase like we do for kids' stuff, teacher's stuff is pretty exciting. And I think Mark and I heard it as we went building to building, talking about the unification, the pride and ownership they feel in their work. And the efforts, I, I think they're really experiencing the fruits of a tremendous amount of effort, as you mentioned, around really building their curriculum for common core.
You know, it's, it's working for them and they're experiencing.
It's exciting to hear them so passionate about it, so thank you for giving us a glimpse into that because even though it may technically be news, I think it's part of what helps us understand better
I agree.
the investment that's happening and its impact on the people who are closest to kids. So that is really powerful for me anyway. All right, thank you guys very much, and we're gonna move on to the monitoring report three point one, which Dawn did her update for us and we can take a quick look and see if there's any further questions and then-
As we discussed last week, we decided that number two was in substantial compliance due to the recent school bus controversy, that we did not act as a unified board, many of us were asking the superintendent to do too many things that were too time-consuming. We should have had all our requests go through the board chair. Other than that, the rest remains the same.
I really feel we, like, that reflects our situation.
I think that was a, uh.
Do you want to say something more?
I, I would only say that, you know, to just for future process, to come up with a better plan for how to deal with anything. Not that, you know, I'm hoping we never, at least, um, but other crises could come up, and I just think that it would be good for us to just have a plan for exactly how we deal with it in terms of communication, you know, um, how we need as a board to then be able to relay information to Mark, I think would be.
Um, should we put, should we usually call those action items? Like, um, future action item might be to develop a sort of response plan to height. I don't know if we wanna call them crisis situat-, is there a better word? Can we come up with a better word?
I don't know, response plan, a crisis situation.
There's board procedures on how to handle, you know, I think I sent you a copy of.
Yeah, board procedures on how to handle special situations.
Special, I like that.
I like that.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna type and then read it to you guys and see if we can do a friendly amendment to that, because I'm in the document right now.
Okay.
Would that work for you?
Is that what you wanted, okay, yeah.
And then we could just approve it with the amendment.
Sure.
Um, board procedures should be developed, or somebody else can talk, and I'll say, to respond to time-sensitive
We said special.
Special circumstances?
Or matters?
Matters? Time-sensitive special matters, was that captured, or?
I would just say matters, but I think at that point, special seems to be.
Matters?
Unexpected matters?
Unanticipated?
Unanticipated matters.
There you go.
Well, there's also a component about how to respond to the unrest, the concern, the questions that you don't have answers to, and you don't know how to channel it, because you don't know yourself, so I mean, it really comes from those procedures that you directed me to, that I think I said a copy of it of OS, Orange Southwest Supervisor Union's Board Procedures on How to Respond to Community Feedback, I don't know what the way it is, but, so there's an element of that as well, like, what do I, what do I do? Do you have a special meeting, do you?
I will relay your concerns to the board chair. Seriously. Seriously, that's the best way, I mean, if you're getting, somebody's in your face, you just keep telling them that you will relay their concerns to the board chair, because, in order to stay, in order to stay compliant.
I could start using two, that's a good idea.
In order to stay compliant, you have to do that. Right?
So, um, should be developed and posted? Do we need to post those procedures?
I think it's internal, I think it's internal to us.
How?
We need to know that, so we can function next time.
And agree upon, how about, board procedures should be do, agreed upon, agreed upon if we're gonna go with OSU, we might not need to develop.
There's your posted on the website.
Yeah, I, I think posting them isn't a bad idea, because it sort of reinforces whatever, whether it's the, I'll relay it to the board chair response, so that.
Want me to send, send it to all of you guys?
Yeah, can you send it to all of us, Mark, and then, so board procedures should be developed, agreed upon, and posted?
Yep.
Board procedures to respond to time-sensitive unanticipated matters.
So we're gonna look at the orange.
Yeah, it might not be all of what you, it may not be all of what you're looking for, Dan, but it's a start.
Right, but, but, yeah, use that as a, a beginning, and I'll go at it with red markers if we want to, and make it, make it work for us, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That sounds great. Okay, I got it. I'll read it to you guys, and then we can hopefully take this one sentence as a friendly amendment and, and let Dawn off the.
And Dawn is not all the way through for the third go around, is Dawn.
Okay.
It's a learning experience, it's okay.
You are doing a great job. Okay, board procedures to respond to time-sensitive uns- anticipated matters should be developed, agreed upon, and made available on the website.
Perfect.
Does that sentence work?
Sounds good.
So with that.
Board procedures to respond to.
Time-sensitive unanticipated matters should be developed, agreed upon, and made available on the website. And I'm gonna put this on our future agenda item, and as soon as our slot can do it, we'll, maybe, maybe Mark and I can get it on the next agenda as long as we get through the other thirty-two slides.
I was gonna say that.
It might be later in November, like, it might not be immediately, but if it's as, you know, maybe operationally, we can just share that document with all of us, Mark, and that we could come prepared to talk about any alterations we wanted, so it might be a quicker conversation for the next meeting, and then we could probably get it on, because if it's an operational thing that we wanna be able to look to and have available for people in case, I'm sure there won't be any time since, if matters, in the next month, but just in case, we might be able to get it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Um, okay.
So that being said, I make the motion that we accept three point one with the amendments.
Who made the friendly amendment? You did?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Did I? Is that okay?
Sure.
I typed it, all I did was really type it, so.
That's fine, that's fine, sure.
And then Dawn is making a motion to, can you present it and make a motion to accept it?
I'm accepting, I'm accepting her amendment to my.
Okay, and then.
Oh, I'll second.
That has to be approved first, because I didn't submit it.
Okay.
I will second the amendment, I will second your motion to approve the amendment.
So, Kim Blason is making a friendly amendment.
Yep.
Yep, and I made the motion to accept her friendly amendment, and it's been seconded.
Okay, all those in favor, aye, all those opposed, passes by zero, okay, now.
Aye. And then somebody else has to vote on the policy.
I will, I will make the motion that we accept three point one as amended.
And I will second that one.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye, all those opposed, passes by zero, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. This looks good, I think.
Okay. All right.
Hey, guys.
Okay, agenda, I'm looking at an agenda that has us with a three point two due on November ninth. Um, and that is accountability of the superintendent, and Rachel did it last time.
Dawn, you ready for another, I'm just kidding.
I think Dan might be now.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be me or Dan. I know, I was gonna say, Cashel and I might be writing furiously for the next year.
That's true.
You know, at, at work time.
Yeah, I can, I can take it if that's, if that makes sense, the word flow of the rest of the board.
If that's okay.
That's true.
If that's okay, that would be great, just as, and it's, I know we're still investing a little bit of time in making sure that that gets out, and like, that good information out there, so thank you, Dan, very much. I know you had done one recently, but, thanks. Okay, and I will come with any suggestions that I have to lead the conversation on the three point one procedures. Well, Mark will share them with everybody, and anybody can look at them and have thoughts, but I'll be prepared to lead that part of the conversation, hopefully, to just say that at some point we'll get to cleaning up.
And then the other thing, I don't, I don't know if you had, but I know we had talked at some point about using that meeting to talk about whatever the results were from the third. Is that?
Yes, on the ninth, so.
Vote results?
Um, so, thank you.
Yeah, obviously that'll be.
And there is an informational meeting on the second.
Yes.
Where is that?
High school.
So the informational meeting, so that you guys know.
Somebody else asked me if there was another one I didn't know, is it seven p.m.?
The, yeah, seven p.m. at the high school, November second, so that's gonna be warned as a board meeting, because the, um, it, it'll be similar to what we would do in advance of a budget presentation, but because both boards are going, the junction and the town are gonna do this together, um, we're going to open the meeting and call it to order, and each of our boards, and then Brendan Kinney's gonna deliver the presentation, largely the presentation that we've been delivering around town the last two months, so, um, that will be on the second, seven o'clock, and it will be done by eight, at least, it has been at all the other presentations, we've been done in an hour.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's seven p.m. at the high school.
Yep.
Then don't forget to vote on the third.
Yes, don't forget to vote on the third.
Don't lie, I bet people work hard for Asian, they forget to go vote on the third.
Forget to get there, oh my goodness.
My absentee ballots are awesome.
So we've done, um, some communicate, updates on what's going on with the Red Study Committee, we're doing our best to get as much information out as we can. We go to one page, document, and it's getting there, I think we're trying to figure out how it will be distributed, we had talked about mailboxes, so, sort of like we do the By the Info Fire, but the content does include, you know, wh- why the study committee came to the decision that they did in the proposal, or the, the analysis and the results in the proposal they ended up with, so, um, the content is not purely neutral, so we're trying to figure out whether or not that's even something that can go out from the school boards, or is just from the study committee, a fact sheet, you know, sort of a fact sheet as they were, are posted in places, and maybe shared through whatever other means, social media, or having it available at the schools and the libraries and wherever else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just from a standpoint of funding, the distribution, um, so, we're still looking into that, and we may just get an illegal opinion on it, and then decide whether or not we can use it as a mailer, it's really tight at this point to probably get a mailer out into mailboxes for Friday or Saturday. Um, so, um, I think we just wanted to make sure that people had as much of the facts as we could, and Brendan Kinney's done some work to correct misconceptions that were out there, or misinformation that is out there, or facts around the study and the proposal. That's been helpful, and we'll figure out how we get that in our places as well, um, any other suggestions you guys have? I think at this point, we're all willing to make ourselves as available as possible to inform and get people feeling prepared to vote and reminded to vote through all of your networks, if you can spread the word that folks should get out to vote on the third, we will have a much better sense of what our communities are looking for.
Did you get any sense in the two dinner meetings you did, when people talked to you?
You know, the, and, so, in the one I did, um, at Essex East Out to this past Friday, it was a collection of four, um, junction, um, older folks that I had a great conversation with, and, um, I think it seems to make sense from their standpoint, and I think, um, certainly from the junction standpoint, I think that is, they're already sharing so many resources under an SU structure, and so the, um, whether or not they're sharing resources, they're already sort of doing that sharing, they're, they have their, a superintendent, and, um, they may have different boards, but they're used to sort of sharing their central office services and whatever else, so it seems like a little bit less of a controversy or question in the junction, um, a few, you know, more questions, and maybe a little bit more sort of, how would this really work in our community? Where we are, um, trusting that a trade-off in, um, our very own, call them up about your bus problems superintendent for a more cohesive experience for pre-K twelve, knowing that there will be some change in consolidation of central office services um, that are right now being implicated, so that says nothing about where that office will be, or, you know, who sits in that office, or even what that structure is, because that is all work of a new board, um, but, and I've heard a little bit more about that. I've also had teachers speak to me after the conversations that Mark and I had, and you took three buildings, and someone came up to me on Friday and said, you know, I was really, a, a town person and a teacher, I was really not thinking that this was the right thing for us, and I feel very differently, having heard from you, Mark, on this, about the opportunities that we could really be doing for students if we were more cohesively aligned, and how we can lead through that, um, with some of the experiences we've had going from a more siloed pre-K eight to a more cohesive pre-K eight. Um, I think there's been a shift for those who've had the opportunity to ask questions and hear about some of their thinking.
Mm-hmm.
But again, I'm sure Brendan or any of us on the committee would be happy to answer anyone's questions. Um, so if people are still having questions, you can point them to the website, you can point them to any of our email addresses directly, um, and if you have other ideas of places we should be to remind people, let us know. I think any place we are is helpful, so even if it's a handful of people with a conversation, whomever they may then turn around and speak to is more people that know where we are on this, and if I have, um, your, I shared with you guys the why this, um, was viewed to make sense for Essex Town, I think it went in the Essex Balloteer, I was realizing we haven't posted anything in that vein from our board on any of, like, our ETSD page, and I'm wondering if that's something you guys are comfortable with us sharing from that piece. Um, it's out there, that, you know.
I mean, just you posting as the chair or board, I mean.
I think I didn't, I was a study committee member, so like, I didn't say, you know, I didn't, my byline wasn't necessarily Essex Town Board Chair in the piece that I had written, but if we were, um, to want to, I don't care that it has my name on it necessarily, if, if you guys are in support of the message of sort of that piece as I had written, it might be too long, so it might need to be tightened, but, um, sort of just pointed to the things that get in the way of us collaborating right now that are structural, which would be, to me, the most compelling reason why Essex Town would wanna do something differently, because, um, there are things that get in the way of the goodwill of the people who are trying to collaborate right now. I don't know how you guys feel about that, we haven't, like, Westford's board did, their chair wrote it, but, um, their board did explain their position on it. Um, and I was realizing, and sort of thinking, for all the stuff that's been written all over the place, and in my on that committee hat has been written.
Now, did the Prudential Committee in the village do anything?
You know, Mike Smith was going to be doing something, um, in the, they use Front Porch forum pretty extensively, and they don't have a Facebook page, so, we could send it out through whatever means, I can double check with him his intention on that, I think, as I saw him Thursday and Friday, and that was his intention to do something. So I looked to you guys, forgot what I wanted us to do on that.
Because I, I would feel as supportive of that as long as I feel like it's an appropriate thing for us to weigh in on the, the vote.
We did by virtue of resolution, so.
We did, that's what I'm thinking, is we've already done that, so.
So it may just be more of an explanation of our position, and I know we, and the majority supported the resolution, so I think for the reasoning that's explained in that piece, so if you are comfortable with that, what I'd like to do is just take a look at it with Cashel and I together, maybe see how we can make it more digestible if it needs to be tighter, I think I may have done another version of it somewhere, I honestly, at this point, it's hard for me to remember, but I think we've got versions of that out there that might be what people would wanna know. Wait, why did the, our board support this? Why does this make sense for Essex Town, and I'm not sure that the distribution through the other channel, where that piece, where I'd written that piece before is a broad distribution, where we have some of our own places to put that statement.
Mm-hmm.
And we might wanna do that for sake of our families or community that's interested in knowing why we think that this is the right thing at the right time for kids and taxpayers. Is that, okay?
Can I follow that?
Can I follow this?
Yeah.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
Just don't make it too political, people will be fine with it.
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of politics.
I'm just, I just told people that, I just pointed to where all the facts and figures are, and, and as a board member, I encourage them to, to study up on the facts, and I didn't offer an opinion either way, so it's.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, let me, um, maybe if you guys are willing to take a look for it tomorrow, um, maybe we can, I'll give you guys what I think is the tightest thing, and see if you guys are comfortable with it, and we can, um.
Unless we individually respond.
Just individually respond to me with any edits, if you guys are insubtle with the idea, let me send you either the piece I've already written, or let me see if I can make it shorter, you know, always, always in the interest of getting it actually read, it's digestible. Um, and then you guys can respond, just not to all, but to me, with feedback on it, and, um, and we can put it someplace, to, like, our Facebook page, probably. Um, and if for some reason you guys think that's not the right thing to do, you know, let me add it to, but I think people might wanna know how our board came to the resolution that we did, and, just.
I'm comfortable with reading the stuff you've, you know, I'm comfortable with whatever you choose. I'm comfortable with reading the stuff you've, you know, I'm comfortable with whatever you choose and whatever you think works, um, that's what I think, so.
Okay, let me send to, I'm just gonna try and shorten and tighten the, the one that I had already sent you guys.
Yeah.
And read it for tone, too, um, and, um, make sure it feels as though it's reflecting sort of what we had talked about, why for our community, we think it makes sense. I think for every community, the position is a different argument maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right, you guys, I will.
We're thirty-five minutes over.
Oh my gosh, thank, thank you timekeeper. Were we like two minutes early last time, so I'm gonna gradually catch up with that thirty-five minutes somewhere else.
So on average, we're only thirty-three minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna just keep do- do- docking ourselves off of that. All right, I would, um, take a motion. I think we've got all that we need for the next agenda and then.
I make the motion adjourned.
I'll second.
And, and Rachel seconded. All those in favor, aye, passes by zero, thank you guys.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.